All right, calling back to order. Board of Education meeting, October 15th. It doesn't look like our student was able to make it tonight, so I'm going to ask Mr. Anthony Sadler if he can come do the Pledge of Allegiance, one of our hometown heroes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 5.0, Announcement of Action Taken in Close Session.
Non-mandem, President.
Thank you. Item 6.0, Agenda Adoption. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Second.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Extentions? Motion passes. Item 7.0, Special Presentation. Item 7.1, Approve Resolution 2856, Recognizing Rosemont High School Alumni Anthony Sadler. Like to come up to the... Up and down, up and down, right? It is my honor tonight to introduce Resolution 2856 honoring hometown hero Anthony Sadler. Mr. Sadler had a summer that I'm sure will go down in the books as a summer he will never forget. As we all know, people aboard the Paris-bound train this summer might not have made it to their destination without the heroic actions of Mr. Sadler and his two traveling companions, Spencer Stone and Alex Gallardas. Their quick thinking and selflessness prevented what could have been a terrible tragedy. They are known as our hometown heroes. In the days since, we have heard from many teachers and staff who knew Mr. Sadler when he was a student in our district. They tell us how proud they are to have known Mr. Sadler and had played a role in his life. In the audience tonight, we have Mabel Gee, Mr. Sadler's first grade teacher from Martin Luther King Jr., K-8 school. Ms. Gee, I believe that you have a brief presentation that you would like to make.
We are here to celebrate Anthony because he is our hero for MLK.
We know that measure is far above meeting the President of the United States. Also in the audience is Elizabeth V. Hill, Principal of Rosemont High School.
We would like to present the letters we wrote.
Anthony graduated from Rosemont in 2010. Ms. V. Hill, would you like to take the mic?
And a big picture when you were in first grade.
I'm not at all excited about following that.
Aww. (laughter)
That was wonderful.
(applause) Sorry.
My disappointment is that I wasn't at Rosemont when Anthony was there because I have heard so many things about the impact he had on his school, and so one of our teachers, Ms. Seagert, wrote something that she wanted me to share. "I am so proud to be here tonight on behalf of Rosemont High School to recognize Anthony Sadler. While he attended Rosemont, he dedicated himself both in the classroom and on the basketball court, and he exemplified the term 'student athlete.' Former teachers and coaches describe him as a hardworking, determined, focused, friendly leader, and his fellow graduates of the class of 2010 say that he was someone they looked up to long before his heroic deeds in France. In recognition of the heroism he showed in selflessly saving countless lives on August 21st, 2015, we've chosen Anthony as the first recipient of the Rosemont Distinguished Alumni Award. This is the highest honor our school can bestow upon a noteworthy graduate, and it is awarded in recognition of a particular achievement of noteworthy value, a series of such achievements, or a career of noteworthy accomplishment. Anthony, we cannot thank you enough for what you have done for your community, your nation, and the world." (applause) He also gets two free tickets for a two-day stay at Disneyland.
Wow.
And, the best gift of all, a Rosemont hat.
And you know Anthony, once a Wolverine, always a Wolverine.
Definitely, thank you guys.
Thank you, Ms. V. Hill. "To recognize Rosemont High School alumni Anthony Sadler, whereas Sacramento City Unified School District with immersed pride and appreciation does hereby acknowledge and commend and honor the heroic actions of the hometown hero Anthony Sadler, and whereas the decision by Mr. Sadler and his close friends to take action in the face of extraordinary circumstances on the Paris-bound train on August 22nd, 2015 showed tremendous courage and selflessness, and whereas Mr. Sadler is an example of bravery for all current and former students in Sacramento City Unified School District, and whereas the staff and community of Mr. Sadler's SUSD alma maters Martin Luther King Jr., K-8 School, and Rosemont High School are forever proud in the distinction and honor that has bestowed upon the schools, and now therefore be it resolved that Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education does hereby gratefully recognize Anthony Sadler as a true hometown and American hero." I need a motion to approve Resolution 2856. Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Extentions? Fantastic, thank you. I'll present the sound. We also have a lovely apple for you. (laughter) Thank you again for everything. The mic is yours.
It's kind of weird because everybody's behind me, but I appreciate you guys for coming out. I had no idea Rosemont and Ms. Gee and MLK kids were going to be here. That's pretty special. It takes it way back to when I was that small, so that's pretty cool. I appreciate all the awards you guys have given me. I really appreciate it. It feels good to be recognized through a school district that I went to, so I thank you guys, thank you.
Thank you. (applause) A little statement for you, one moment.
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption, with the exception of technical problems on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will air on Friday, October 16th at 6:00 p.m., Tuesday, October 20th at 9:00 a.m., and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Members of the audience wishing to address the board should fill out a speaker identification form located in the back of the community room and give it to the Chief Communications Officer, Mr. Ross, prior to the conclusion of the item's presentation. Please speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comment to items not listed on the agenda. If you are found commenting on an item that is on the agenda, you will be asked to defer until your item comes up on the agenda. Please turn off all cell phones or place them on silent or vibrate.
Still have Item 7.2, Theodore Judah Presentation, Project Green Science Alive Program Growth and Success. Shannon Hardwick and the Green Team.
Good evening. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to present to you this information about school gardens. You guys can split sides if you want. My name is Shannon Hardwick, and I currently work for Solborne Farms. I direct the program called the Growing Together School Garden Initiative, and previously I worked at Theodore Judah and have been coordinating that garden program for about nine years now. And so, in order to start this presentation, we're going to learn a little bit about Theodore Judah's garden from a couple of students who are here to represent.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Remy.
And I'm Alana.
Theodore Judah's garden has been thriving for the past nine years with help from every student. At our school, we've planted many plants, raised chickens, and participated in a variety of green activities.
We have been raising chickens for three years. Their names are Coco and Josephine. Every week, a classroom has the responsibility of caring for them. Over the nine years the TJ Garden has been running, we have planted many edible plants such as kale, lettuce, carrots, and even strawberries. Programs such as Green Team Science and Garden Alive and Natureball all circle around our garden. Last year, we focused on being green by growing our own plants, composting, and recycling. In fact, our programs have put up posters around our school reminding us to be green. My favorite part about garden is at the end of the week, we are caring for the chickens. Any eggs that we found, we cook and eat along with pancakes. My favorite part about our school garden is that it helped me prepare and succeed in the Natureball competition. We love our garden.
So, just a little bit of background, working at Theodore Judah and finding the success that was happening with the students there and sort of the multifaceted learning that was going on, we had an opportunity after a few years to develop a partnership with the California Endowment, and so Solborne Farms, through some funding that is focused on the Building Healthy Communities Collaborative, decided to try to take what we've been learning and practicing at Theodore Judah and spread it out to other schools in SAC City. And so, I feel like there's just an amazing movement going on that needs to be brought to the surface and some awareness, and so tonight, I'm hoping that you'll see just a glimpse of the amazing work that's going on. So, in preparation for the work that we did, we kind of did an assessment of what was happening in the SAC City schools, and we realized that 55% of the school sites actually have a growing space on their campus, some of which are being well facilitated, some which have been let go a little bit, and this is really an amazing percentage of schools in a district of our size and also being such an urban district. So, it opened an opportunity for us to look at the potential of what we have in our area, as well as just an amazing desire from so many schools and teachers and local community members and restaurants and such to support this type of movement. So, last year, Solborne Farms hosted the first-ever School Garden Symposium. Being the first of its type, we thought we might have 50 participants, and we actually had 175 participants. Many of those were teachers and community members and parents from SAC City School District. During the symposium, we did workshops, we collaborated, we shared best practices, and we also sort of set forth a vision for a garden in every school and talked about what that would look like. We will be hosting the symposium again this year, and I'm excited to say it will be at Luther Burbank High School. We're anticipating that we will have upwards of 500 participants, and the high schoolers are going to play a key part in being a part of that action as well. So, as you see, it's going to be February 27th and 28th at Luther Burbank, and we're really excited to see what's going to come of that. But as we look at the learning, I just, I really want to try to bring to life the fact that the school gardens are touching students in so many different areas. So, this idea that if you look at this flower model, school gardens are touching on academic achievement. They're engaging students and families and communities in ways that they wouldn't be able to access a campus otherwise. It sort of gives an entry point for other people to get involved in a campus that might not otherwise be equipped to be there. It promotes environmental stewardship, which I know is a key facet to what we're doing here in SAC City, and enables in students, as you heard, to get involved in the greening of their campuses and raising their awareness. It also is developing career pathways. It's impacting students and their choices. It provides social-emotional learning opportunities, and finally, it really is developing a nurturing sort of living campus model where students are working together in this dynamic sort of learning. And I think our feeling is that if we can start developing all of those facets and really tapping into those gardens as a learning tool, we're going to have more resilient schools, and it's going to also affect our communities. So, I just thought I'd highlight a couple of things. Unfortunately, we hope to have a few students here that couldn't be, but one of those is career pathways. We're looking at a model where we're trying to identify elementary, middle school, and high school and tie them together. So, for example, the Willsey Wood students have been going and mentoring at some of the other elementary school sites, and it provides them an opportunity to be leaders and teachers. We have students that have graduated from Luther Burbank and are now going to UC Davis in Agriculture Studies because they were exposed to the garden at Luther Burbank. So, we're seeing the effects and the potential to tie this together into these amazing career pathways. In addition, clearly, academics are a great part of the garden, and who more to speak to that than a teacher who's been applying the academics? I'm going to invite Lisa Bettencourt up from Pacific Elementary. She's going to share an experience with you.
Hi. My name is Lisa Bettencourt. I teach fourth grade at Pacific Elementary, and I'm also on the District's Next Generation Science Standards Committee as a teacher. Three years ago, when Growing Together, Shannon specifically approached me and Pacific School, I took the opportunity only because I wanted to beautify a part of our campus, but I immediately saw that there were some major nutritional and life science benefits to having a garden at our school, but I still saw it as something kind of extra, something nice to have. Then, last spring, I tried using the garden with a small academic project. I used Growing Together's pilot garden curriculum to teach lessons, and then the students' project was to design, map, and then write about, and then present their own plan for planting Pacific Six garden boxes in the spring. In six weeks, my fourth graders used more than 20 Common Core standards and applied 13 Next Generation Science practices and concepts, including engineering design standards, in their projects to create the spring garden plan. In your package, you will find the 33 standards we applied. In addition to the huge amount of standards we applied, I also saw 100% engagement, which is amazing, an amazing depth of knowledge and depth of understanding and true applied learning happening. This is partly because the motivation factor is so huge. Connecting our learning time in the classroom to our hands-on experiential learning out in our own garden motivated all 33 of my students to come to school every day, behave during class time, as well as to learn, read, write, speak, collaborate, even working at recess, lunch, and at home on this project. For this project, even students who had been working far below grade level for four years of school turned in full essays meeting Common Core standards for opinion, including evidence from text. Even Kevin completed his first writing assignment all year because he so wanted to present his spring garden plan to his classmates. So, I now realize that this garden is not extra. It holds everything we need to give our students a well-rounded education, an enriched education, and an applied education, and it's a one-size-fits-all solution for pre-K all the way to high school and even adult ed, and it has a bonus of adding beauty to our campuses.
So, as Lisa highlighted, there's an application for so many of the standards that we're working towards, but I thought it was so telling when I was looking up Common Core on the Department of Education, and it says, "The curriculum should provide significant guidance for design of curricula and instructional materials. The standards do not prescribe how they are taught and learned, but will allow flexibility to teach and students to learn in various instructional contexts." I think this really opens the door for us to apply standards, but in a way that we see students being successful, and so this is just very exciting to me. One of the things I wanted to highlight too was just some of the things I've witnessed. Even this morning, I approached a garden docent who was working at Theodore Judah, and she mentioned that one of the students who never ever journals had written an entire two pages in his journal because of their experience in the garden this morning, including diagrams that were labeled, and I got to see it, and it was fascinating and exciting, and so I watched these things each and every day as we're on the campuses. Beyond the Common Core standards, clearly, we're working towards nutrition and health, and so, one of the opportunities we have in garden is to expose students to veggies and to see their food being grown and to have an opportunity to try that. On here, we've talked about a study that shows that if students have a connection and exposure to fruits and vegetables, they're more likely to intake it, which you will often see. They'll try anything they've grown, even if they really don't like it. The other thing that I found fascinating was that there's actually been a study done recently in the Journal of Environmental Health and Technology that found there's a bacteria found in soil and outdoor spaces that actually increases serotonin levels and decreases anxiety while significantly improving focus and learning. So, just imagine if we could give every student who would normally get his anti-anxiety pill or some other medical enhancement to keep him calm, if we just allowed that child to get their hands in the dirt in the morning, maybe we would solve a lot of our issues in the classroom. I'm going to let Desiree from Camellia Basic speak to you a little bit about how this has been affecting her in her healthy lifestyle.
My name is Desiree Grady, and I go to Camellia Basic. I think having a garden at our school is really cool. The things I ate from our garden were kale, cabbage, kale taco, beets, and radishes. My favorite was kale chips. I thought I wasn't going to like radishes, but they were delicious. In the third grade, I watered, weeded, and planted flowers in our garden. We also had a power of produce party where we got to eat the vegetables in our garden. I learned about the parts of a plant and some of the pollinators of the plants. Some of my ideas were that we could use vegetables we grow in our school and use them in our salad bar to help save money. Another idea is that the older kids at Camellia Basic could teach the younger students all about, the younger kids at Camellia Basic, all about gardening.
So, another piece that's been really highlighted is the social-emotional learning that takes place in the garden. Just this last weekend, I was talking with the principal from Oak Ridge, and he just continues to remind us that the students at Oak Ridge Elementary are finding their garden a place where they can really be using a lot of their social-emotional learning skills, and it has to do with leadership and problem solving and teamwork. I find that a lot of students will actually say the first thing they feel in the garden is peace, and so I think if a student is feeling restful, they're more successful. For those students that maybe are not generally successful in the classroom, they have a chance to do something different and be a leader and potentially teach another student something. I've witnessed this a number of times with special needs students who find the dirt or something tangible with their hands very soothing, and that they can do something that maybe has a pattern to it or a rhythm or something that's really comforting. So, I often see in many of the spaces that the special needs students find success and comfort in that area. So, overall, just to highlight, the work that we are doing, Growing Together is currently working with five campuses. It includes Oak Ridge Elementary, Pacific Elementary, Nicholas, Camellia Basic, and Willsey Wood Middle School, but we're also partnering with many schools in the district. And the bigger picture that I really hope to create tonight is that there's this collaborative movement that is happening that is really welling up, I think, from the bottom up, and I have appreciated the partnership of Iris and Kathy from Facilities and the Nutrition Department and working with all of them about how we can weave this together to be a really powerful and strong movement, and so what I'm asking you as a board tonight is to come onboard as well and to support this movement and to really see that we can have an impact in our students' lives. So, I wanted to read just a couple of things that some students have said, and then I will task you with a few things that we would love for you to do as a board. So, one of the students had said, "To me, the garden is important because it's the only part of the day I relieve my stress, and I can be with nature. I come to the garden to take my mind off situations I can't do anything about." I think this highlights the fact that many of our students are in urban, really challenging settings, and they find a place of rest in the garden, which is really powerful. "The garden is a special place because it's an outdoor nature feast. We are constantly grateful for the garden, and sometimes we're already there before a class even starts." Can I finish, or do I need to stop?
You can finish.
Okay. "That shows how excited we are to work." So, finally, I'll just briefly, you have the slide on environmental stewardship. We spoke a little bit about that, but what I really want to get to is, we're asking of the board some simple things that you can do to support this work. One would be, many of the challenges that come in gardens are just that we don't have enough support to make it happen. Teachers want to be in the garden, but they need some training. They need some understanding of how to apply the standards, and we've been doing that. We've been doing training and doing supplemental after-school options for teachers to participate in, but you as a board, considering how you might facilitate more of those trainings for teachers, would allow us to grow further into other campuses and support that. I think it has to do too with looking at how we can collaborate our various departments in the district that will support the gardens through nutrition, through facilities, clearing the lines for communication, and then, of course, adopting some sort of standard-based garden curriculum. Lisa mentioned we've been piloting a garden curriculum called Growing Together. The teachers have been gathering information. Iris and I have been speaking off and on, and so we're hopeful that either we will be able to adopt that particular standard or another garden standard that will support teachers and enable them to use those spaces. So, we would ask that you continue to think about ways to actively fund, help, support, encourage the growth of this movement. And the bigger picture that I really hope to create tonight is that there's this collaborative movement that is happening that is really welling up, I think, from the bottom up. And I have appreciated the partnership of Iris and Kathy from Facilities and the Nutrition Department and working with all of them about how we can weave this together to be a really powerful and strong movement. And so what I'm asking you as a board tonight is to come onboard as well and to support this movement and to really see that we can have an impact in our students' lives. So I wanted to read just a couple of things that some students have said, and then I will task you with a few things that we would love for you to do as a board. So one of the students had said, "To me, the garden is important because it's the only part of the day I relieve my stress, and I can be with nature. I come to the garden to take my mind off situations I can't do anything about." I think this highlights the fact that many of our students are in urban, really challenging settings, and they find a place of rest in the garden, which is really powerful. "The garden is a special place because it's an outdoor nature feast. We are constantly grateful for the garden, and sometimes we're already there before a class even starts." Can I finish, or do I need to stop?
You can finish.
Okay. That shows how excited we are to work. So finally, I'll just briefly, you have this slide on environmental stewardship. We spoke a little bit about that. But what I really want to get to is, we're asking of the board some simple things that you can do to support this work. One would be, many of the challenges that come in gardens are just that we don't have enough support to make it happen. Teachers want to be in the garden, but they need some training. They need some understanding of how to apply the standards. And we've been doing that. We've been doing training and doing supplemental after-school options for teachers to participate in. But you as a board, considering how you might facilitate more of those trainings for teachers, would allow us to grow further into other campuses and support that. I think it has to do, too, with looking at how we can collaborate our various departments in the district that will support the gardens through nutrition, through facilities, clearing the lines for communication, and then, of course, adopting some sort of standard-based garden curriculum. Lisa mentioned we've been piloting a garden curriculum called Growing Together. The teachers have been gathering information. Iris and I have been speaking off and on. And so we're hopeful that either we will be able to adopt that particular standard or another garden standard that will support teachers and enable them to use those spaces. So we would ask that you continue to think about ways to actively fund, help, support, encourage the growth of this movement that's really impacting our students. And so finally, I'm just going to say, help us reach the dream of a garden in every school. Let's be a district that is a strong example of how to weave diversity, agriculture, high learning standards, and environmental education into one beautiful arrangement. And I am really thankful for the people who are here tonight in support of a garden, if you guys wouldn't mind standing. These are many of the teachers and people that are at various schools, working together, collaborating together. So thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have public comments?
We have eight public comments on this item. I'll read the first four names. If folks can please line up behind the microphone in the order you're called. Sarah Wagner, Dawn Student, Dudley Burton, and Jennifer Van Dyke.
Okay. Hi. I'm Sarah Wagner. I teach sixth grade at Oak Ridge Elementary, and I work in the garden. In collaboration with Growing Together, Oak Ridge's garden has gone from a literal rat's nest to a beautiful, thriving space where students can connect with nature. Most recently, we've had the privilege of adding an orchard of 15 fruit trees. Shinko Asian pear and flavor finale Pluot are now part of our students' vocabulary, and more importantly, soon, part of their diet. With every seed planted, we are cultivating the food desert that is Oak Park. I just, I hope that you strongly consider supporting the movement. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dawn Student. I'm a first-grade teacher at Camellia, and I just want to agree with everything that Shannon said and say that our school shouldn't be the only one. I feel guilty that my students have so much and that everybody should be exposed. Some of the highlights are when the kids have the food tasting and pick the food that we've grown from the garden. And we've had butternut squash, collard greens, Swiss chard, all the kohlrabi, all these things that you think the kids aren't going to eat, purple cauliflower. And I'm having parents in to help serve it, and the parents are turning up their nose, and the parents won't try it. And the first graders eat it until they're telling the parents how delicious it is. And could you please go to the store and buy this healthy food for us? Thanks.
My name is Dudley Burton. I teach environmental science at Sac State, and I'm a co-creator of our urban agriculture program there. I'm coming at this situation from a little different direction from the people you've heard already. But we work with training environmental professionals and teaching those environmental professionals to be more actively involved in their communities. So in that regard, we've worked specifically with Luther Burbank High School to help set up an aquaponics program as part of their gardening effort. And we'll be working with other schools and individuals in related capacities. The key point I'd like to emphasize is that the field of environmental science takes the perspective that learning requires both intellectual effort but also manual effort. And gardens provide a terrific opportunity for people to work with their hands, to deal with situations that are very different from what they encounter in their mental efforts. But the connection between seeing things grow and learning about ecology in practice turns out to have very deep and important significance. And I think the gardening movement is an important political movement to address many of the concerns that people have about not only food quality and nutrition, but also stress management and learning to deal with others and learning to deal with nature more productively. So we see a variety of key concepts that are demonstrated in these school garden efforts and think that this is an important, excuse me, an important idea that can benefit students from the earliest learning stages to the most advanced learning stages. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Burton.
While our next speaker approaches the microphone, if our next four speakers can please line up. Brenda Ruiz, Todd McPherson, Ryan Noshiravon, hope that's right, and Cheyenne Kenniston.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Van Dyke, and I was an intern at the Burbank Urban Garden at Luther Burbank High School this past spring. As a student at Sacramento State, I took an urban agriculture course, which provided me the opportunity to intern at Burbank Urban Garden, working with a senior student there to build an aquaponic system. As an intern at Burbank Urban Garden, I witnessed how their garden program provides its students the opportunity to develop relevant and real skills to prepare them for a more sustainably-focused job market. As a recent graduate from Sacramento State, I know that employers are really looking more favorably toward relevant, hands-on job experience and completed coursework when deciding upon who to hire. Programs like Burbank Urban Garden prepare students for careers as environmental professionals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name is Brenda Ruiz. I'm speaking on behalf of Slow Food Sacramento and Slow Food California. I'm also a chef of 20 years in the region. We love what Growing Together is doing and all of its various partners. As a partner organization, I just want to let you guys know that there's so much investment by the community in these school garden projects. We've helped raise funds. We've helped do outreach to bring people to their spaces, access other resources that other organizations nationwide and statewide can bring to bear. So the community is stepping up, the chef community is stepping up, there's lots of nonprofits that are bringing whatever they can to bear. One of the projects that I love that they have is the tree orchards projects that they do. And that's a wonderful program that travels the country, putting trees all over the schools. And so there's a lot here, and we know the communities behind it, and we're, organizations are asking the school board to at least step up to the plate the same way that the community and chefs are. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Race.
All right. Good evening, board members. My name is Todd McPherson. I am the school garden coordinator with the Sacramento Chinese Community Service Center that runs after-school programs throughout the district and a couple other places, but I focus here in Sac City Unified. I work really close with Mr. Aaron McClatchy, who unfortunately can't be here today, who's a special ed teacher at Luther Burbank High School and runs the Burbank Urban Garden or bug program there at Luther Burbank High School. And I also run a small farmer's market in South Sacramento on Mack Road, where we have had participation from high school youth and had the greenhouse certified from the bug, and the students come out and actually sell for some real hands-on experience in that way. So I'm here to speak my wholehearted support to school gardens, the education that can happen, the emotional learning that can happen, the peace that can be seen and felt when the urban environment for a lot of our youth and all of us in general can get pretty wild. Today, I had the fortune to go out with a small group of students to the Center for Land-Based Learning as the first field trip for their farms leadership program. Went with three youth to go to Sierra Orchards, where their office is, and see the whole process of growing walnuts all the way through harvest. So we went out and saw the shakers. We saw them harvest, draw them up. We spoke with Craig McNamara, who is the lead farmer out there, also founded the Center for Land-Based Learning, very inspirational guy. And then we made pizzas, cleaned from the field, and then went to a nut harvest or a processing plant. And these students looked around and saw everything that went into it. And two students on the drive back said, "Wow, I had no idea this happened this way." And one said, "I was interested in engineering, but I think I'm going to get into ag engineering." And when they were walking out of the field, these are students who were not real interested in nutrition at all, said, "We've got these bags, and it feels like Halloween." These are kids that I can't get to focus in the classroom ever. So just a little testament. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McPherson.
Good evening, board members. My name is Ryan Noshiravon. I'm an environmental studies major at Sacramento State and also a fellow intern of the Burbank Garden at Luther Burbank High School. Last summer, we had the privilege of putting together and programs through the Summer of Service, not only with Luther Burbank students, but also other incoming freshmen in the district. And I just wanted to reflect real quick on how this doesn't only affect one individual community, one individual school community, but even it goes beyond. It had a really great effect on me, and I just wanted to be here and reiterate my support and how much this program can really do to somebody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, board members. My name is Cheyenne Kenniston, and I am the intern that managed the construction of the aquaponic system at Luther Burbank High School. And I am here to contest that I have witnessed the development of the students. I've seen opportunities be available to them because of this program. One individual got a conference paid for her to go to, and I know that was a wonderful experience for her. And this really develops their inquiry skills. After being there, they used to ask me questions about college, ask me questions about food and all of that, and that really helps their development, and that's what I'm here to contest for. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have a board comment. Student member Barry.
I want to say that I think everything you're doing is completely wonderful, and I'm in full support of it. I have a friend who goes to George Washington Carver, and they have a garden there. I don't know if they're in connection, but I know they have one, and I know my friend raves about it all the time and that everyone there really enjoys it. And I know at least one teacher at my school is interested in the garden, and I hope it's okay if I give her your contact information and anyone else who I think might be interested.
Thank you. Member Cochran.
Well, I feel extremely proud because in my area is Theodore Judah School, and I'd like to encourage all of my board members to come out and visit with me because it is a truly extraordinary place with a butterfly pavilion, chickens, as Alana said, and an atmosphere of discovery and work and production that I haven't seen in many school gardens. It's really a good example. So I was really pleased to see Shannon describe that we had 55% of gardens in the school, in our schools. And I'd like to really push and state that we should have 100%. I completely see the value of the gardens. I think 100% is something that we should shoot for. And it also, it's a unique character of a valley town. We are in the heart of the, one of the breadbaskets of the world, and I think that this is, this type of work is an acknowledgement of the power of place and that we need to let our young people, our students, know where they are and how they can learn from their environment. One of the things I noticed with the professor from Sac State, you know, we are working very closely with Sac State to provide pathways, and maybe member Ryan can address that more, from our school district to Sac State. And this is such a hands-on and obvious one, when you have students coming from Sac State providing anecdotal and firsthand information about how great and cool it is to go to college and how you can discover more about all these things that you're learning in the garden. There's just nothing like a firsthand experience like that. So I'm going to wrap it up, but I'd like to say to Science Alive/Green Team and all of the presenters here in favor of school gardens that you have my unequivocal support. And I need direction from you as well because I need to keep abreast of programs, initiatives, and things that you are pushing forward in the district, so we have that communication. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Cochran. Member Rodriguez.
Thank you, Vice President Pritchett, acting president. So I come with a very unique perspective. I actually was born near the salad bowl of the world, Central Coast. So I was born in Santa Cruz, and I was raised part of my life over there. And as a little girl, like somewhere around Alana's age, I was taught many things about respecting the earth and pollution and making sure that we gave back to Mother Earth. And so you guys had me at, can we? So I just want to make sure that I'm going to articulate a few important things here, and it's just, I'm so saddened that Mr. McClatchy couldn't be here because I did purchase some items. Those peppers were delicious, by the way. I'm coming back for more. So I did purchase some peppers from the club and some tomatoes, and my children enjoy the tomatoes. So I got two varieties of tomatoes. But I just want to make sure that I'm communicating this because it's very important, and I've been on this talking point for a while. I used to attend Luther Burbank when they still had an FFA program. There are still little, you know, little ruins now that I call them because it's no, they're so inactive, and it hurt my heart when I went, as a board member, when I went to go see that. And the very teacher who was our FFA teacher back when I was there was on his last year. He was retiring, and he begged me, begged me. He said, "Please don't let this school lose their FFA program." And I couldn't do anything because nobody believed in it back in 2008. And here we are in 2015, and now we're believing in it, now we're talking about it, and I thank you all for coming here. I thank you. Because I'm going to tell you how important Luther Burbank was. He was an American botanist, he was a horticulturist, and a pioneer in agricultural science. That school is named after this man. He created 800 strains and varieties of plants over his 55-year-long career. Some of these plants, I'm just going to name them, the July Alberta Peach, the Santa Rosa Plum, the flaming gold nectarine, the Wixen Plum, the white blackberry, the freestone peach, which many of us eat. And that's just food. And actually, he created the russet potato. He's a very, very, very important man, and we're not giving that school any bit of justice about who we named that school after. That school should be our premier school right now for this type of environment. That should be our agricultural school focused on that specific thing. That's what my dream is. I'd love to see that happen at Luther Burbank. Now, I'll get off my soapbox for that. Not only, thank you. So I'm just going to say that also, I work in the most wonderful place ever because I get to read things like Bread for the World. They come in, and they're working on some awesome administration or legislation and supporting legislation, child nutrition programs. So they're before the Senate Agricultural Committee. They're working with Congress and individual board members. They're working with Global Food Security Act. They're working with Food Aid Reform. These are the types of things that come across my desk and that I get to read. So we have lots of resources out there, and we haven't even touched them. We haven't begun to bring everybody that is working on these issues and bringing them into the loop. I'd love to work with you all. Reach out to me. Ask me how I can connect you up with resources. I would love to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Rodriguez. Member Ryan.
Thank you. Well, I want to begin by thanking Shannon for a really phenomenal presentation. And I also want to acknowledge all of the hard work that the teachers in the room are doing to bring these meaningful connections of school gardens to their students. It's wonderful that we're having this conversation tonight because October is actually National Farm to School Month. And frankly, it's wonderful that we have a month that recognizes it, but we have to ensure that we are doing more to integrate these conversations in the classroom and across the district throughout the year. There are a few things that are startling to me. Quite often, school gardens and having a connection to food that we grow happens in more affluent neighborhoods. And so for me, it is incredibly heartwarming to see that in my own backyard of Oak Park at Oak Ridge Elementary, we have a model for what a school garden and now an orchard can be. So thank you to the teachers who are leading that work. I have seen young people absolutely energized and inspired by having the opportunities to go out and to go out and learn within the confines of those school gardens in their own backyard. I've also had an opportunity to visit Pacific where teachers have stepped up in a major way. Shannon was training the entire teaching site to be able to integrate Common Core standards into their school garden lessons throughout the Pacific Elementary School site. And I think that that is a testament to your leadership, Shannon, but also to a willingness to take this to the next level because we have seen that it transforms the lives of our young people. I know Member Cochran said, you know, we are the breadbasket of the nation. And frankly, I think that that statement is often used and yet students so few times have connection to what that means, don't know where the food that they're eating is actually coming from. And it's astonishing to me to live in a high-poverty area where we have a food desert, where we have so few opportunities to access green space. But on our class, on our school sites, we're now giving our students and our families an opportunity to have a meaningful experience with a school garden that will hopefully build character while it's building community and connecting to standards moving forward. I would like to ask Shannon to come back because I have three quick questions that I would like you to answer. I think it's very easy for us to have a presentation like this that is difficult to disagree with. I mean, this is something that is an initiative that has a tremendous amount of energy right now. But the reality is that while 55% of our school sites have school gardens, I have driven around to many of those school sites where the gardens lay barren. And so I want to ask you, one, what the cost of onboarding a school site to really be a rich hub for a school garden is. I also want to know what the challenges are in sustaining that work. And then I guess my third question, and if you don't, if you forget, I'll come back to it, is what are our opportunities to, beyond just making a board commitment saying we hope to get to 100% school gardens in the future, actually seeing that become a reality in a reasonable and actionable timeline?
Sure. Thank you, Jessie. So I would just say that the cost really comes in, not in the building of the garden. You know, you can find any group to donate materials and a lot of helpful hands, but the sustaining truly is the biggest obstacle. And I think that really comes in equipping and empowering the community and the teachers and the administrator about how to manage that garden well and how to pass it along. And so when you talk about an actual, the expense like of money, you know, I think that it is, even with one or two people on site that have a stipend or are able to develop trainings, you could look at maybe a small amount of $5,000 and you're covering enough training and maybe a stipend for a coordinator to really start to sort of support the program with some direction. But I do think it also has come down to developing teams. And so over the last three years that we've been piloting the programs, really the key success is coming when teachers are joining together along with parents and other community members to develop a team so that it doesn't lay on one person and that there's shared vision and collaboration. And then I think also, as we've seen, sometimes when you have that frontrunner and they leave, then that's when the garden falls apart. So if multiple people are accessing the garden, you have more of a cross-cultural team across, you know, all across the disciplines and even the grade levels. If one person leaves, it doesn't affect the success. And so for me, it's about developing a program and not building a garden. It's really, it's not the build of the garden. It's establishing something that can be maintained and sustainable and is truly woven into the curriculum and the ideas of the school site itself. So I would say, Judah, one of the things that we do is that every class has a garden period in the week. It's just built into their schedule. So every student is accessing that garden. Every teacher or garden volunteer is given direction on what lessons they will be doing. We lay out a whole set of standards and lessons throughout the year so they know exactly where they're headed and where they're ending. And then it is just part of the schedule. So there's no question about whether we're going to be in the garden or not. It's just part of what we do. So I think if, even if a person or two left, it's part of the culture. We've woven it in so well. And I think that's really something that we're doing at some of these other campuses. I'm seeing this develop. So there's the potential, whether or not it's in an affluent neighborhood or in a low-income neighborhood, I think we can do it. It just takes that serious involvement of vision-setting and training and equipping that will really be the powerful piece. You're welcome. Any other questions?
Member Rodriguez.
Yeah, I think I wanted to add in, Member Ryan's question just kind of refreshed my memory about a conversation I had with a particular person within our district. But there's, one of my area schools has a piece of land that, you know, I go and I help clean up almost every year with a community of volunteers. And I've longed for that piece of property to be developed as a garden. And to my disappointment, the go-to for this individual was, oh, well, we're thinking about putting a parking lot there. And it hurts to hear that, that the go-to response would be, we got, we need parking, we're going to put a parking lot there. Rather than thinking of our children and thinking of the future and thinking of that community, that's a food desert and we could have an opportunity. There's an opportunity that is going to present itself. You put that community garden there where the community can come in, take care of the land, and then everything else happens after that. We can certainly find parking somewhere else, but we can't find somewhere else to put the garden. But I think it creates a mind shift that people have to go to first and not second or an afterthought.
Thank you. As you can tell, I think that it's safe to say that we all support your efforts. And I really thank you for your presentation. One thing I would like to suggest, and maybe you're already doing this, is maybe trying to partner up with the parent-teacher groups in all of our schools. There's, you know, all different types, PTA, PTO, PGGs, you name them, they're there. And maybe help training. That way they can have a board position that would continue on. And if you need help with that, I'd be more than happy to help you out and point you out in the right, in the right way. We appreciate you coming out tonight and giving us this lovely presentation. We love the speakers.
Thank you. Item 8.0, public comment.
Oh, before we move to public comment, we actually have Willie Murphy, a senior from American Legion High School here. Can you come join us up at the mic? Can I start while he's walking up? Okay. Willie, while you're making your way up to the front, I want to go ahead and begin. You know, earlier tonight, before you entered the Serna Center, we were honoring a hometown hero, Anthony Sadler. And Anthony has been on national and international TV and on radio and recognized in myriad ways. I say all of that because you are also a hometown hero, but a hometown hero that not many people have heard of. And a hometown hero representing American Legion Continuation High School, a high school that often is stigmatized in a way that makes me very sad. I look at you and the fact that you walked over here tonight so that you could receive this recognition that we've thrust upon you because of a courageous act that you recently undertook. So Willie, just recently, I am told that you in Oak Park witnessed a car that was burning and that in the midst of this burning car, you took quick action and decided to put your own well-being at stake and rescue a person and pull them from this burning vehicle. Is that correct?
Yes.
So not many of us have heard about that, Willie, but the truth of the matter is you saved a life and you saved a life in a completely unselfish and courageous manner. You might not be on television or radio, but you are a hometown hero. And I'm incredibly proud of what you've done. And thank you so much for inspiring young people in Oak Park to also take a chance and save a life if they have an opportunity. So I'm going to come down and present to you with this beautiful certificate of recognition.
You know me, I was scared.
Want to say a couple words? A little sage phrase? Well, we're not going to put him on the spot, but thank you so much for what you did. Very proud.
Thank you, Willie. Item 8.0, public comment.
We have three comments on 8.0 from LaShania Brazil, Nikki Malevsky, and Darlene Anderson.
Good evening, board members. I almost want to look up there and say, this is ladies' night. Don't see.
It's a monumental night.
Good evening, board members. My name is LaShania Brazil and I'm with the Black Parallel School Board as well as a mother of children that are attending the Sacramento School District. Tonight, I want to just give you an update on the Black Parallel School Board, the support of the district as a 21st century multicultural education partner. I would also like to inform you that the Black Parallel School Board has reconstituted the Restorative Justice Collaborative. The purpose of the reconstitution is to support the district implementing the new school discipline administration regulation process. We are also glad to, we are also pleased to participate in the district administration regulation meeting that will begin next month in November. And then second, the Black Parallel School Board will be reviewing the results of California Assessment of Students' Performance and Their Progress. One major area of focus will be the baseline data in relation to African-descended students and then tracking their outcomes as well. And then lastly, the Black Parallel School Board will support positive district initiatives that will ensure high-quality support for students of African descent. Thank you again, LaShania, with the Black Parallel School Board and the mother of children that have, a mother that has children in the Sacramento School District. Let's build a 21st century multicultural education partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Malevsky.
Good evening, members of the board. Chief of Schools, Lisa Allen. As you know, I'm Nikki Malevsky, President of the Sacramento City Teachers Association. As you may not know, we recently reached a conceptual agreement with Human Resources to resolve three significant outstanding issues related to fixing the mess that the unilateral changes to our agreed-upon health plans created. I would have hoped that this would have been the last time we would have talked about health plans for a while, but it appears that that won't happen as long as the district continues to use the grand jury-investigated broker, Keenan and Associates. Once again, the phones have been ringing off the hook at CTA with actives and retirees thoroughly confused at the inaccurate and misleading information presented by Keenan on their benefit bridge and on the district website. And people are very frustrated that they cannot get any answers from the benefits office. Quite honestly, the technicians in the benefit office should not be having to deal with these problems because Keenan and the benefit bridge portal that you also pay Keenan to create and maintain for you should have accurate information. Open enrollment, the one time of year that your employees can make changes to their health plans has been going on since September 28th. And before it was extended, it was scheduled to end tomorrow at 5:00. Days ago, when I logged on to review the carrier options and compare CTA plans, I was stunned to see that I was being offered health plans that are not available to certificated employees. Western Health Advantage, a high deductible plan, a very expensive PPO plan, yet one of the only two health plans for active teachers, Health Net, was suspiciously missing. In addition, dental plans that I know should have been offered weren't and programs that are not an option were listed as available. We know Keenan represented to the district that things would be right. No surprise to us that they weren't. I must ask, how many mistakes will Keenan be allowed to make before the district pulls the plug? And is there no limit to the amount of financial risk the district will allow Keenan to expose it to? Look, you have a professional staff of educators who want to move on to talking about quality professional learning plan, early academic and behavioral interventions, adequate support staff for our students, well-rounded learning opportunities, recruiting and retaining high-quality and diverse teachers, and many other topics that could help build our district to be the destination district it can be. Enough of the health benefit problems so we can move on to the important issues. I sincerely hope this is the last time that I have a report like this to give to you. I fear that it won't be. But I'm a teacher and our hope springs eternal. Thank you for your time tonight.
Good evening, Darlene Anderson. I want to address you tonight in regards to students who persistently score below, below grade level. Because this, a child could be in Sac City Unified School District all of their years and graduate still far below basic. And that means that that student would probably be graduating with a certificate of completion. And since the state has waived the high school exit exam, that means a lot of these students will spend at least four or more years in a junior college. Every student has a right to make progress in this public school system. And the district should be measuring that progress. It should be measured annually. And that's what an IEP is for. The IEP and a child in special education should monitor progress and ensure that that student is making progress. But somehow, in this district, it's focused on social and emotional learning, which actually just documents a child every time they don't know how to transition to task. But transitioning to task is a right of every student in the school district. They have a right to learn how to be in the classroom, how to socialize with their peers, not to be documented for not having the ability to be in the school or in the classroom with other children. This district has to do way more. They're not doing enough. African-American parents normally, quite frankly, this is 2015, and really don't have an expectation that success is the key to an afterlife of public schools. 12 years in the public school system, children are getting out with the inability to get a basic job. I don't know what to do. I filed some support actions for a parent and actually, the district was found noncompliant. And the district did absolutely nothing and then started to focus in on the student's behavior. Behavior is one thing that the federal government protects the transitional rights for students with disabilities. And the district needs to do more about the positive behavior support plans and the supports for students so they understand how to be successful in the classroom. And I would hope that the board would ensure that some of these services for kids with disabilities takes place. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. All right, item 9.0, public hearing. 9.1, public hearing and adoption on Resolution 2057 for developer fee increase. Ms. Kathy Allen.
Well, good evening, President Pritchett and members of the board and Superintendent Allen. Always catches my attention when I hear that name. I have to look and make sure it's you and not me. So before the board tonight is a recommendation from staff to adopt an inquiry.
Hold on one second. We were actually supposed to open for public hearing.
So again, before the board is a recommendation from staff to adopt an increase in the district's developer fee amounts. This fee is increased by the state allocation board every even-numbered year, typically in January. Following that increase, districts must then prepare a developer fee justification study that demonstrates a nexus between any new development and the need for additional or adequate school facilities. So in January 2014, the state allocation board increased the statutory fees for Level 1 residential from $3.20 a square foot to $3.36 per square foot. Commercial retail and industrials, another category, it went from $0.51 per square foot to $0.54 per square foot. And then in addition, districts are required to calculate separately a fee for retail self-storage. Although the SAB, state allocation board, did increase the statutory fee, the district during its just- the district during its justification process was unable to increase in the self-storage fee category, so therefore, we leave our fee for this type of use at $0.26 a square foot. So I did want to comment briefly on why we weren't able to justify the increase in the self-storage units. Mainly, it represents... The charge for storage units is the total unfunded reconstruction cost, which is less than it was when we did the last developer fee in 2012. So since the last developer fee study, we've had measures Q and R funds which have been authorized, so that kind of worked to help it not go up. We also... The law requires a notice of public hearing, and then an opportunity for the board to receive comments from the public. So I'll step aside and...
Thank you.
Is there any comments?
Do we have public... No? No public comment? All right. We need to take this. I can have a motion to bring this in from conference to action? Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Great. We're in action. Any more discussion?
Staff recommends adoption of Resolution 2857.
Okay, great. Can I get a motion for approving Resolution Number 2857? Oh. Yeah. We're in action. Thank you. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Great. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. All right. Item 9.2, public hearing on renewal of charter for Capital Collegiate Academy. Kramer and Kristen Fiorelli.
Well, good evening. Acting Board President Pritchett, esteemed board members, and Deputy Superintendent Allen. I am Jack Kramer. As our district's charter oversight coordinator, I will be presenting and facilitating tonight's public hearing for the charter renewal of Capital Collegiate Academy. Tonight, the presentation will entail a brief overview of Capital Collegiate, review of the charter renewal process, the purpose of tonight's public hearing, and next steps. Thereafter, Capital Collegiate Principal Kristen Fiorelli will make a more detailed presentation on behalf of her school. Capital Collegiate has been in operation for five years, with an opening date of August 2011. Based on the September 18 renewal petition, their projected enrollment is 269 students. They are a K-8 school, currently serving K-4 within their slow-growth model. The school is located at 2118 Meadowview Road. They are classified as an independent charter. Their renewal petition submission date is September 18th, and their current charter expires on June 30th, 2016. Board members and cabinet, please note that there is a separate companion document provided for your reference, and it's the single sheet that is right after my hard copy presentation. It looks like this. And it is for your reference. The process for charter renewal is: The charter school submits the renewal petition. This is the start. Upon receiving the petition, the SCUSD Charter Review Team verifies that the documents are complete and begins the evaluation and review process. Next, the public hearing must be held within 30 days of receiving the completed charter renewal packet. This is tonight. This is the go. We are approximately halfway through the charter renewal process. In the meantime, the Charter Review Team continues the evaluation and review process in preparation for a report of findings and a recommendation to the SCUSD Board. And finally, the board decision. This is the finish. At the public meeting, per ed code, the board must either grant or deny the renewal within 60 days following the submission of a charter renewal application that is determined to be complete. However, the date may be extended by an additional 30 days if both parties agree to an extension. Tonight's public hearing will allow the governing board to consider the level of support for the petition of the charter. The public hearing will allow the petitioners and the public to speak regarding the charter renewal application. The public hearing will allow interested parties to comment to the governing board regarding their support or opposition to the charter renewal. The next steps. The next steps are: The Charter Review Team will continue our review of previous practices and data, future plans, and the renewal petition. Capital Collegiate has mutually agreed to an extension to enable board action for November 19th, 2015. I would like to now invite Principal Kristen Fiorelli to make her presentation on behalf of Capital Collegiate. Thank you.
Good evening, Acting Board President Pritchett, members of the board, and Deputy Superintendent Allen. Tonight, we are so... We are very pleased to present the progress of Capital Collegiate Academy during the public hearing of our charter renewal petition. We're a school committed to the success of every single one of our students. We are a college preparatory school founded on a mission to prepare our students to compete, achieve, and lead in high school, college, and in life. We've shown strong enrollment patterns since we've opened, and we've partnered with the district successfully along the way. We operate a slow-growth model. We opened in 2011 with only a group of kindergartners. Those kindergartners are now proud 4th graders who are here this evening. We maintain full enrollment and a very strong waitlist in each grade. We're incredibly committed to diversity and proud of our continuing efforts to enroll and staff a diverse school community. At our school, we don't have a majority race, and we continue to expand our recruitment efforts to maintain this. We're proud to enroll a school that has a majority low-income, 20% of our student population are English-language learners, and 11% have identified special needs. This speaks to our commitment to identify every... To educate every student who comes to our door, and to closely match the enrollment trends within the nearby community. We are absolutely committed to academics. First and foremost, we're committed to the academic success that comes from over three hours of ELA instruction a day in small groups, an extended school day, time for homework, and extensive professional development each week for our teachers. I'd like to call up Cherish Dawson, representing 4th grade and Capital Collegiate, to speak on behalf of our school.
My name is Cher... My name is Cherish Dawson, and I am a 4th grader at Capital Collegiate Academy. I love being at Capital Collegiate, because our school is determined to get us to college. That's important, because if we don't go to college, we won't have as many chances to get the jobs we want. I want to go to UC Santa Cruz and become a fashion designer. Capital Collegiate hires strict teachers, so we can be on point. They want us to be respectful and listen. The things that our teachers teach us are things we are going to have to do and know in the future. There is no playing around. There are a lot of learning expectations. We do have fun, though. Like enrichment and field trips, like when we visited Cal Berkeley. My teachers in 3rd grade, Mr. Moynihan and Ms. Halston, gave us exit tickets in reading and math every day last year with difficult questions and problems. I finished the year reading at a middle-of-fourth-grade level. I am proud that I met standards in math and exceeded them in reading on a Smarter Balance test. I'm proud of our school, because we are all really smart and work hard. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. I'm going to move us ahead. We'd now like to ask Melissa Colon, parent, to come on up.
Good evening, board. I have been a parent at CCA since 2012. My daughter attended at the age of four and has continued her education through there, who's a now 3rd grader. The commitment that we have to the school, we travel about 30 minutes every day there and back to make sure that we get to the school. The progress that my daughter has had has... I mean, last year alone, she went from jumping four reading levels or four-step levels in one year. She's on the process of making her step 10. She's excited about school and going to learning every morning. It's not a fight to get her ready for school or getting her to read. She has a book in her car. And she wants to... She's excited about reading. She's excited about coming home and telling us everything that she's learned. As a mental health clinician, going into the other schools throughout Sacramento County and other counties throughout California, the difference in the commitment that these teachers have, Ms. Fiorelli has, Ms. Schwinn has, to the staff, to the students, and to the families, is something that I haven't seen. Where I could call their teacher at any... At 8 o'clock at night, if we're having problems with homework, if I don't have, you know, questions, they're there. They're there to support. I really strongly recommend that you consider the renewal, because this school is amazing, and the children that they serve are only going to benefit as well as the community. Thank you.
I would be remiss if I didn't speak to our results publicly, and I see that the clock is running out. So I'm going to move us ahead. We are incredibly proud, and on behalf of the entire school community and the people standing behind me, it's a privilege to share that our students outperform students across the state in both ELA and math on the recent Smarter Balance. As a requirement of our charter, we must show our achievement relative to similar schools. This is defined as schools where 10 or more of our students would otherwise attend. We are incredibly proud to be adding something of such value for the families and the children of the South Sacramento community. The board is aware of the community we have been committed to serving since 2011. We are so proud that in our first year of testing, our African-American students scored 44 points above the state average in ELA. We're equally proud that our Hispanic-Latino students scored 32 points above the state average, and our low-income subgroup is among the highest scoring in that subgroup across the state. We thank you so much for your continued partnership. We commit to producing these same excellent results for our students each and every year. And on behalf of the group of students, families, and staff that I'm up here representing, we deeply appreciate your support for our work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fiorelli. Amit?
We have seven comments on this item. I believe a couple of these speakers may have already spoken, but I'm going to read them anyway. Our first four speakers are Liberty Matias, Melissa Colon, Kayla Noemi Diarte, and Laura Kerr.
Good evening, Acting President, School Board members. Thank you for having us. My name is Liberty Matias. I teach 1st grade in UC Berkeley at Capital Collegiate Academy. Last year, I was given great privilege to lead one of two kindergarten classes. Taking on this charge, I knew that children demonstrating academic readiness by kindergarten were three times as likely to meet reading standards by the 3rd grade. So within the first month of meeting my students, that realization hit me even harder. Together, we had to make drastic changes and jump leaps and bounds in order to be competitive for the top universities. At the beginning of the school year, 90% of my students could not write their name and did not know letters, letter sounds, or how to rhyme. So I took that first step, investing them in these goals to read like a 1st grader and retell simple narrative stories. As the months passed, I became increasingly proud of my students' progress. Parents would tell me that scholars enjoyed coming to class, participating in small reading groups, and were proud to be on Team UC Davis. Scholars who could not fully write their first and last name at the beginning of the year were drafting opinions of their favorite breakfast food by month 5. By the end of the year, 85% of my young, bright, kinder minds were reading on or above grade level and on track as a rising 1st grader. Witnessing conversations about books between 5- and 6-year-olds became the new normal in my classroom. CCA is a place that fosters this level of high learning, a place where students meet and exceed those expectations. That being said, I urge you to approve our charter for our families and for our students. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kayla Noemi Diarte. I am in USC 3rd grade class at CCA. I love our school, because I've already visited UC Davis and Cal Berkeley. Our teachers help us figure out answers and don't give us the answers. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening. Laura Kerr with the California Charities Association. I'm really excited to support this charter. Their results speak for themselves. And I'd encourage you to visit the school and see them in action during a school day. I'm not an educator myself, but you can see the focus and the commitment and the drive and the work that the kids are doing. So I'd really hope you approve this charter. Thanks.
Thank you.
Our final three comments on this item are from Charlie Moynihan, Yitzel Ramirez, and Penny Schwinn.
Good evening, board, and thank you for allowing us the opportunity to come today to share with you some of the magic that is happening at 2118 Meadowview Road. I'm a 3rd grade teacher. My name is Charlie Moynihan, and I proudly lead the 3rd graders in Stanford. And I must tell you that if you were to visit and come into my classroom and ask, "What is this classroom about?", they would say two things. They would say "family", and they would say "team". And I think, just by looking behind me at the crowd in green, it is clear that those principles go out further than my little room, Room 9, the end of the hall at CCA. And it's a founding principle that is very important to the work that we do. Now, I didn't become an educator for something simple. In fact, if I wanted that, I would have run far from education. But I come every day because, two weeks ago, I was able to instill within my scholars the ability to challenge themselves and understand tough words, like alliteration. We have this wonderful thing every morning called "community", where these influences of team and family can really shine. And I challenged them. I said, "Hey, I'm going to teach you a high school word", because at CCA, that's what we do. We push. We get them to excel and reach their dreams. And during "Dear", which happens daily, an exercise of their... For them to read, one of my students was so excited, though it was supposed to be silent, she jumped up and said, "Mr. Moynihan, I found an alliteration." I said, "Really? Can you show me?" And she did. And that kind of excitement is everlasting at our school. Now, we know that we're in a district where the results are good, but very humbling. And to go to a school every day that has that insight to move forward and to excel is a mission that we are proud to uphold. So thank you for voting and for considering.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Itzel. I am from Capital Collegiate. Capital Collegiate is the best school I ever went to. They teach me what's wrong and what is right. In Capital Collegiate, all the students have friends to play with. Nobody is left out. And if someone new comes to our school, we welcome them to our school. We always stand in hall. We don't swing our hand back and forth. We simply put our hands to our sides. We do hard math, but for some of us, it's really easy. We help one another. We read at different step levels. We got this thing that is called Step Mountain. The Step Mountain, it helps us read better. We take a reading test, then after a few days, they tell us if we passed. I have lots of fun in school. I love all my teachers, and that's why I love my school, Capital Collegiate Academy.
And Ms. Colon was generous enough to give me her two minutes, so you know I'm long-winded. Good evening, Deputy Superintendent Allen, member Pritchett and the Board, and good evening to everyone to my right. It's nice to see you. My name's Penny Schwinn. I'm the founder of Capital Collegiate Academy. I could stand up here and I could talk a lot about our results. I don't think anyone who remembers May 10 of 2010, when this charter was approved, I promised that the school would have amazing results for students in a community in which I grew up, a community where my mom taught for 36 years in El Paso Heights, a community that I am incredibly, incredibly committed to. So it's no surprise. I'm not surprised. We have an amazing leader. We have an incredible staff, and we have wonderful families and students. But I don't think what we talk about enough are some of the themes that came up tonight, which is about family, it's about community, and it's about the group that we have formed and the team that we formed over the last five years. So I'm going to tell a little story, and it is, I won't name the student by name or his mother, but it was when we were in the founding. And I remember sitting down with this parent, and I said, "What do you want for your child? What do you really want?" And she said, "Well, I want him to be happy and healthy and successful." And that's no different than any parent in any community, no matter where you go. And I said, "Okay, well, what else? What do you really want for your young scholar?" And she looked at me, and she kind of got quiet, and she took a step back, and she said, "Well, I grew up here, and I didn't go to college, and I didn't graduate from high school, but I know my boy can, and I know he can do things that I never did. And I just don't know how to get him there. I don't know how to help him. I don't know what to do. But I know that he can do amazing things, and I think that you can. I think that you can get him there." And the humility it takes as a parent to say something like that has become very real to me with my own children. And my oldest daughter is adopted, and I remember when she was ready to be born, and it's waiting to become a mom, and Sam was waiting to not be a mom, and we had a really wonderful moment where she looked at me and she said, "I know that my baby girl is going to be amazing, and I love her, but I can't give her what she needs, but I think you can." And it was in that moment that what the parent said to me really rung true. She said the exact same thing as when I was adopting my baby, right? And it's because every day, parents in our communities, whether it's Capital Collegiate or any school in Sacramento City Unified, they put their homework in the backpacks, and they ride their bikes, or they take the bus, or they walk, and they give us their babies every single day. And they give us the trust, and they give commitment and say, "You have our babies. You have their futures." And the privilege of that is mind-blowing. And every single day that I've been part of this school community, I have been honored and privileged to be a servant to those families, children that I deeply, deeply love and care about, community that I'm passionate about, and families that I will never, ever let down. And I've been honored and privileged to work with and for this district. I know that the teachers and the staff members in this district, many of whom I'm seeing tonight, feel the exact same way. Every single person in Sacramento City Unified, we take the babies every morning. We make a commitment. We wake up every day and we recommit because it is that important. There's nothing more important than the education we're giving to our children. So what I say tonight is I'm proud of what we've done for the last five years. I am excited about what we can do over the next five years. I am humbled by the work of Principal Fiorelli. She's doing a better job than I ever could as principal, and I am proud to be part of her team. And I am so proud, proud like a mama, of all of the children who are in this room tonight and who've come to our school every day. They are incredible, no more incredible than any other kids, but they are ours and they are special. And so we ask you to give us another five years to prove what is possible in South Sacramento because what our kids can do is amazing, and we want to continue to show that to you. Thank you so much.
This is a conference item. Do we have any Board, Member Ryan?
I didn't even realize I had mine on. You go ahead and go first. Okay.
Oh, sorry. Member Rodriguez.
Thank you. Sorry. I think we're all a little taken by Ms. Schwinn's comments, so very emotional. And I know how far you've traveled. So for those of you who don't know, Ms. Schwinn now lives completely across this beautiful nation of ours. And this is how important and how committed she is to the community at CCA, and I really thank you. It just touched my heart to hear you say the words that you say because it's true. Because as parents, we take our children to school every day, and we entrust our precious jewels. They're priceless, and their little minds are just ready to be formed. And when you see the results that you see in the school, you know, it gives you a good feeling of, you know, this is what we're here for. It doesn't matter what type of facility it is. It doesn't matter whether it's public or private or charter or whatever name you want to put on it. When there's excellence happening somewhere, you have to acknowledge it, you know? And that's what we're here for. Because regardless of where it happens, how it happens, there's a gift, and these can be used as models and taken forward. I love the theme of the college, the college themes. You know, children already are instilled with, "We're going to college. I belong at this particular school site." And they're heading that direction. Over the summer, before school started for my children, I took them to a couple of colleges and universities. I took them to USC and Pepperdine, and we've got a scheduled visit to go to Stanford. Is it high academics and high achievements that, you know, they're striving for? Yes. But you know what? Nothing is too high. And if I'm doing that myself as a mother, as a board member, I know that many other parents desire to do that and desire to give that to their children as well. So I thank you all for creating that family, that community, and these results are amazing. Thank you.
Member Ryan?
So I did have two quick questions. You spoke to achievement for African-American students at Capital Collegiate Academy. I'm wondering, did you see that across all ethnic subgroups, you've closed the achievement gap? I see the high percentages for reading by step, but was that across all ethnic subgroups?
We did, and we're really very proud that there is not an achievement gap in any subgroup at Capital Collegiate. To give a little bit more context, Member Ryan, for the data, as a school, in terms of our Smarter Balanced data, for example, we had a small number of students take the exam, and it doesn't quite hit the threshold of publicly sharing a lot of the numbers. But we do not have an achievement gap at Capital Collegiate in any subgroup.
And why did you have a smaller number of students taking the exam?
We have only, last year, at this time, we had only third grade. So we had two sections of third grade.
Great. So one other question I have. What is your class size for Capital Collegiate Academy?
We have a class size in kinder and first grade of 28. At second grade, it goes down to 26, second through fourth. We do run a model where we have an additional teacher at the grade level in each classroom only during the literacy block. So essentially, when ELA is happening, whether that's guided reading, narrative texts, informational texts, phonics in the lower grades, students are learning in groups of eight to a maximum of 13.
That's incredibly helpful information. My final comment is just to the students and parents who were brave enough to come up and make their voices heard tonight. I truly hope all of these beautiful young people that I'm looking at and to the audience at are going to college, and I love that you are aspiring to Stanford and USC and probably some wonderful public colleges right here around the Sacramento area as well.
Thank you, Member Ryan. Any other board discussion?
Thank you so much for coming out. Very inspiring stories. We really appreciate it. We look forward to seeing you back.
Thank you.
Right. Item 9.3, Public Hearing on Approval of Resolution 2858, Compliance with Pupil Textbook and Instructional Materials Incentive Program Act, Public Hearing.
Mr. Turkey.
Yeah, why don't we just wait just a couple minutes and let people...
Guys, don't go too far. Okay, please don't go far.
What is, what's the difference?
I'd like to ask all of my board colleagues to please come back up to the dais.
I'll start whenever you'd like.
Thank you. Hold on one moment. We need a quorum. One more.
All right. Ms. Member Cochran is making her way back up to the dais. We can start. Thank you, Mr. Turkey.
Okay, so, good evening, Deputy Superintendent Allen and members of the Board. I am here this evening to report on the district's compliance with the Pupil Textbook and Instructional Materials Incentive Program Act, otherwise known as Educational Code 60119. The Public Textbook and Instructional Materials Incentive Program Act requires a public hearing by the eighth week of school to certify that all students have sufficient textbooks or instructional materials that are consistent with the content and cycles of curriculum frameworks adopted by the State Board of Education in the core subject areas. The steps to ensure sufficiency, first of all, were the survey of sites to see what textbooks or instructional materials that they would need. After that, followed the redistribution of surplus textbooks wherever we could, ordering additional textbooks where needed, and then verifying materials at each of our school sites. We certify that each student has sufficient textbooks and instructional materials in English Language Arts, Mathematics, History and Social Sciences, English Language Development and Science, and in the high school, in laboratory science equipment. This slide outlines a sufficiency status for all of our schools serving grades K through six. As you can see, all of the schools are sufficient. This slide details all of the middle school, which serve our grades seven through eight, and also shows all of our middle schools are sufficient. This slide shows all of our high schools serving grades nine through 12, and shows once again that all of our high schools are sufficient. As such, the recommendation is that we approve the Resolution 2858, and I will open it up for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Turkey. This item currently is... I'm closing public hearing at this moment. All right? We have one public comment. I'm sorry, what? I'm opening public hearing. Okay, sorry. I'm learning.
We have one public comment on this item from Darlene Anderson.
I would say now.
Good evening again. I have one question. I remember I was probably the first parent in Sac City to file the Williams complaint in regards to textbook sufficiency, where the district had not chosen to purchase books for children in special education. What the Board actually did was... was approve an adoption that said that would be the teacher that determine the textbook that the student would have. And so, the teacher and the IEP is the one that actually selects that text. My question is, how is age-appropriate curriculum being given to children with disabilities? Because the teacher's selecting the text, and they get to choose, but those standards, those children still need to meet. And so, we're not demonstrating meeting standards of children who are in seventh grade, that are probably seventh graders, that are doing third and fourth grade work. Because the teacher has selected curriculum, which they have a right to, to determine the, the movement of that student, but we're not measuring the growth. And that's why I said, "Far, far below basic" is just unacceptable. So, I don't know how that happened. I know that I'm going to address it because I'm going to an administrative hearing with a student to address just that issue. Because he had a right to work towards seventh grade standards, and we were not working towards those standards. But I don't believe that parents who are, have children with special needs, understand the complexity of moving towards standards-based aligned IEPs. So therefore, when their children get curriculum that's two to three grade levels below, and they think that their kid is getting an A, well, that A is really not an A. I don't know what that A means, because it's not going to mean that the kid's going to graduate on time, meeting the same standards as his non-disabled peers, and that's what the federal law requires. So, I would like to find out just what's happening with that, because it was a board policy that approved that so long ago. It was a long time ago. And, um, meeting those standards for all kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. All right. I'm going to close the conference item. I need a motion to close conference. Second? Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? We are currently in an action. Is there any comment, board comment? Thank you. Second? All in favor? Say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Fantastic. We are, um, it has passed. Resolution number 2858.
Thank you.
We are now out of public hearing. Item 10.0, Consent Agenda.
I don't see any public comment on 10.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Thank you. Second? Thank you. All in favor? Say aye. Aye opposed, abstentions? Consent Agenda is approved. Item 11.0, Board Workshop Strategic Plan and Other Initiatives. 11.1, Monthly Facilities Update Presentation by the Food Literacy Center for the Liata Ta Floyd Farm Project. Ms. Kathy Allen?
Uh, good evening again. So normally, this is the time that I would come up and show a bunch of pictures of before and after, uh, the construction projects. Um, last month, we were able to bring you some, uh, student interns that worked over the summer, and this month, uh, Board Member Hanson asked that we bring Amber Stott on board. Um, she's going to talk a little bit, a little bit about the Food Literacy Center and a proposal that we're working on for the Floyd Farm Project. So, I'll introduce Amber Stott. Turn the mic over to her.
Hi. Thank you for, so much for having me. Uh, I'm really excited to talk about the Food Literacy Center and the project that we are proposing to partner with you on for Liata Ta Floyd Farms. So, do I like point, or... Great. Uh, so, Food Literacy Center, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization here in the Sacramento area, founded in 2011, and we currently work in seven schools, uh, most of them here in this district, and we provide, uh, cooking and nutrition education to low-income elementary kids, so largely in Title I schools. And, um, food literacy, if you're not familiar with the term, we define that as understanding the impact of your food choices on your health, the community, and environment. So, we're really trying to get kids excited about fruits and vegetables. Uh, that's our mission, is to inspire kids to eat their vegetables, but we're also trying to help them see the bigger picture of where do those fruits and vegetables come from, and how does that not only impact my health, but how does that impact, um, our family budget? And how does that impact, uh, the community as a whole? So, these are the kinds of things that we teach through financial literacy and recipes, and everything's very hands-on and very, um, inquiry-based. So, a lot of STEM education, those kinds of things. Um, and what we are proposing is that we would be the partner on the Floyd Farms project that is at Liata Ta Floyd Elementary School. So, I think, um, most of you are familiar with that project, but essentially, uh, we would be moving Food Literacy Center's headquarters to that site, where we would be running full-time programming to the students at Liata Ta Floyd Elementary, and also Health Professions High, which is on the same campus. And we would continue to deliver all of our programming to the seven-plus schools that we currently work in. So, um, why we exist? In the Sacramento area, there's a 40% childhood obesity rate. Only 6% of our kids are eating their recommended daily amounts of vegetables. So, this is a leading cause of all kinds of diet-related chronic diseases. And, so, we're trying to get kids at the youngest age possible and help them develop these healthy habits while they're young. So, um, what we do is we educate, both in the classroom, and then we also train in the community. We, um, encourage folks from the community to apply and come through something we call our Food Literacy Academy, and we actually train community members to become certified food geniuses, and these are the folks who deliver our programming. And they get trained by SAC State Nutrition professors and other folks with master's degrees in food systems. They learn our curriculum, they learn our recipes, and they're the folks who deliver our curriculum on our behalf. So, um, they're trained and they're certified by us, and we oversee them. Um, and I will say that, both in our results and also various studies that we've found through Stanford University, if you teach kids about vegetables and nutrition for about three months, you can have, um, an impact on their attitudes and their knowledge, and longer-term on their behavior. So, we actually measure what we're doing. We created our evaluation tool before we even wrote the first lesson, curriculum lesson, and we know that our program is working. We have data to prove that. Um, so, and you have it there. Um, but we know, for example, that kids are going home and asking their parents for the foods that they taste in food literacy class. This is critical, again, to building those lifelong habits. We work with a variety of community partners. Um, you can see some of them there, uh, like the California Endowment, obviously, you yourselves as a school board. Um, we have worked with, um, almost every chef in the community, from Michael Tuie, um, who's running the arena's food service, to the, um, Ella, to, uh, I don't know, food trucks, you name it. Um, and our kids really look up to these chefs as role models, and it really elevates, um, the importance of what they're learning in the classroom about eating vegetables and learning how to cook them. And they come, um, they come to look up to these chefs as, you know, potentially, maybe they'll work in one of those restaurants one day. And we actually will bring the kids into restaurants as little elementary student interns, and they're plating food in the kitchen, and they're serving food at 10:22, and it's amazing to watch. And these chefs just take them right under their wings. So, um, we also partner with folks like Slow Food, with Shannon from Soilborne, who was here earlier, with the Food Banks. Uh, most of the food nonprofits in this community are, are very close partners. Um, and these are some of the awards that we have as a nonprofit. We have a Snail of Approval by Slow Food Sacramento. Um, we were also named by Comstocks as one of the most inspirational nonprofits. And, um, some of our hopes for being at the Liata Ta Floyd site and being able to be onsite full-time, uh, we know that about 50%, 50% or 70% of child's behavior is actually environmentally related. So, whether or not, um, kids are eating fruits and vegetables, that's a behavior, has to do with the fact that maybe they don't have access to those fruits and vegetables, because they live in a food desert. So, these are some of the environmental, um, changes that we can create by being onsite, building a farm and a school garden onsite, having cooking classes onsite to help these kids change their environment, at least in the school setting. And, uh, we also know that, uh, or also in our plans are, um, for the students to become docents, for them to become student leaders. So, for example, if we have kids from our Pacific, um, elementary school that want to come visit Liata Ta Floyd, that the Liata Ta Floyd students would be their docents and show them around their garden and their farm. If the chefs from the community want to come to Liata Ta Floyd and visit the garden or the farm or the kitchen, that the Liata Ta students are the docents showing them around, and hopes that they will increase their leadership and also begin to see themselves as community leaders. In addition to the academic, um, standards-based education that they'll be getting, we're also thinking big picture and longer-term for the success of these students. Um, we also are thinking about their parents. Like I mentioned, we have the Food Literacy Academy, where we train folks as food geniuses, and we are constantly recruiting from the communities that we serve to bring folks in through that academy and become our instructors. And, um, sometimes those positions also become contract positions that are paid. So, uh, essentially, our goals are to increase kids' knowledge. That's the easiest one. Uh, then we want to help increase their attitudes toward healthy food, and we also want to change their behavior over the long term, so that when faced with, um, apples versus chips, that they're picking the apples. And this is just a little, um, brief overview of some of the types of curriculum. As you can see, it can, um, tie into reading, it can tie into science, it can tie into math, it can tie into history. Um, there's really no end, when you're talking about food, to what it can overlay with in terms of standards. Um, and like I mentioned, we would be building our, uh, broccoli headquarters right there onsite at Liata Ta Floyd, which comes with that the benefit of, um, the oversight that we would invite the district to have, and actually place a school district's board member on our board. And then we would also invite staff from the school to serve on our programming committee, which oversees our curriculum and, um, the shape and scope of our programs. The farm, we really want it to reflect, um, where Sacramento and California are headed, and also to reflect the local community. So, we want to hold community meetings and learn from the parents what types of foods they have fond memories of eating, um, and potentially grow some of those foods. And we also want to ensure that we're doing things that are drought-tolerant and kind of moving out of the box of traditional ag and thinking creatively, partnering with folks like Slow Food on, um, Ark of Taste seeds, which are heirloom varieties that have been lost. And we need to, um, ensure that they're being grown and tasted to, in order to save these seed varieties. So, all kinds of really fun, cool things that we can do with the farm and the learning garden. Um, and so, every single student in elementary, high school, will receive, um, curriculum in the kitchen, which will be hands-on cooking, nutrition, uh, in the farm, which would be farm literacy, so whether they're planting seeds or composting, um, and then also after-school, where we currently are serving, um, all of the after-school kids at Liata Ta Floyd. And then, during summer school, we would also, um, serve the elementary kids at Liata Ta. And then, high school, same thing. Um, and there, the difference is in their after-school, we would be training, like, maybe 30 high schoolers a year to become food geniuses and help us with the elementary schools, students. And then, families, we want to do a family night out, where the, we invite the families to dinner in our ki-, our teaching kitchen facility, and the kids are helping cook the meals for their families to show off what they've learned. So, that's it. Um, that's the long and short of it, and I'm sure you have questions, and I look forward to answering them all. Thank you so much for your time.
Great. Do we have public comment?
We do. We have six comments on this item. The first three comments are from Nicole Rogers, Brenda Ruiz, and Yvonne Fisher.
Hi. I'm Nicole Rogers and the Director of Farm to Fork, and I can't express enough how valuable the programming of Food Literacy Center is to our community, and what a huge asset they will be to the community of Liata Ta Floyd as our community as a whole. You'd be setting the bar high and demanding for a better food and health future for this entire region by partnering with Food Literacy Center. The Center, while nonprofit, runs with incredible savvy and accountability that we would only wish to see in most of our for-profit businesses. This partnership with Food Literacy Center will put into practice the math and science of measuring and mixing ingredients, the literacy of reading recipes, the understanding of agriculture and where our food comes from, and most importantly, these children will gain confidence and make smart changes and be great contributors to the world that we live in. So, please consider this. This is really one of my most favorite projects.
Thank you.
A little nervous. Good evening. My name is Yvonne Fisher, and I'm a parent. My daughter is involved with food literacy. She started out as a first grader, and she's third grade this year. Um, before food literacy, I am a woman of tradition. My mother gave us the basic vegetables, broccoli, cauliflower, and corn. There's things that I thought I didn't like until food literacy, and I'm an adult, 30 years old, like artichoke, um, beets, and Brussels sprouts. I never wanted those until food literacy. And not only do I enjoy the vegetables, my daughter does too. We go to the grocery store, she's finding things, and she's looking on the back of the packages, making sure it's healthy enough for us. She helps me in the kitchen. She's very hands-on. Not only are we more knowledgeable about our vegetables and fruits, my daughter wants to be a chef, and that's because of food literacy. They educate her on healthy eating, and now she's saying she wants to be a chef, and this has gone on three years. She has lots of opportunities from food literacy, opportunities that we've never would have seen without Ms. Amber and Ms. Elaine. She was on Good Day Sacramento, and she made an artichoke salad. I loved it. Like I said, I never thought I would like artichoke, but I loved it. So, I am a big supporter of food literacy. I see what they do for the children in Oak Park. I am an educator at the, at my daughter's school, and I see how some of our babies there, they don't have vegetables at home. They love the veggies in the program at the school from food literacy. So, I'm a big supporter, and I hope this works out for Ms. Amber and food literacy program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher.
Hi, guys. Uh, Brenda Ruiz again with Slow Food Sacramento. You've heard about our wonderful partnerships, but actually, tonight I'm speaking wearing a food genius hat. Um, last, two Novembers ago, I had the honor of attending the Genius Academy. And being a chef of 20 years, I thought I knew it all. Uh, but I learned so much, and it gave me the opportunity to work one-on-one with students. And now, I work at, um, two school sites and after-school programming in Sacramento City Unified School District Schools, as well as, um, uh, the opportunity to work with the libraries and, and their program. And it is so amazing. I'm a mom to a six-year-old, um, little boy, and as much as he's been exposed to food through my career and our family, he is the finicus eater, and I was like, "Oh, the universe is, is crazy, right?" So, um, but this year, he decided he want to be a farmer, and in the late part of May. And so, he rushed to put things in the ground so that he could see the benefits of growing his own food and tasting his own food. And I was, I asked him one day, like, you know, I've been dreaming of this day for years, and it finally happened. And he says, "Well, you do all this stuff with Slow Food, and you do food literacy, and, and you know, and, and I want to grow my own food. I want to be a farmer." And it really, uh, what it really showed me was, you never know, whether it's math or science or whatever it is, that you just need to expose kids enough to healthy behaviors and pathways, and you never know when they'll turn it on. So, I applaud the district's commitment to academics and to literacy generally, and I think we can do a far more to expose our kids to fresh foods and to embracing environment and healthy community around healthy food. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our final three comments are from Elaine Lander, Alex Visaya, and Todd McPherson.
Good evening. My name is Elaine Lander, and I am currently the Program Officer at Food Literacy Center. But I started as a volunteer at Capitol Heights Academy with Amber about two years ago. I was volunteering for about a year, mostly evenings and weekends after school, was at a session. And I went through the Food Genius Academy, got my certification, and when an opportunity opened up to become a part of this organization, I jumped at it. The opportunities that I've had, both, uh, professionally and personally with this organization have been amazing. I have a great opportunity to teach at Liata Ta Floyd this year, having taught both at Capitol Heights and Pacific Elementary. I've seen the impact of our program in the schools. So there was one student, Anthony, who is in fifth grade, and he had never seen a pomegranate before. He was looking at the whole pomegranate, he took the seeds out, and he tasted it, and he was like, can you eat this chewy part? Because the inside of the pomegranate seed is really hard, and a lot of the kids would spit it out. And I'm like, yeah, you can, that's where all the fiber is. And after we did that, we went out to the Leotata Floyd garden where they had some of the pomegranate trees growing, and we searched for pomegranates to see if they were growing on the trees and where we could find them. And that connection from our kitchen classroom to the outdoor classroom, for a student to be able to experience the whole component of seeing pomegranates growing and trying it, and then in subsequent classes, we'll make a pomegranate and persimmon salsa this fall, just really brings together the opportunity that I think this organization has to make an impact on the well-being of our students currently, and then carrying that into the future.
Thank you.
There's another name for me, but I don't see anybody.
He's saying, go ahead, you can go ahead.
Good, all right. Well, Todd McPherson again, speaking as Brenda did, from a different hat. This coming just to lend my support to Amber and the Food Literacy Program and the need for kind of comprehensive programming, like what they're proposing, to address this really murky world of food security. So I worked during the school year Luther Burbank in multiple school gardens over the summer, run a farmer's market down on Mack Road and Center Parkway with the Mack Road Partnership and Kaiser. And you would think, okay, there's not a lot of food, not technically a food desert, there's a food source there. But put a farmer's market in and take cow fresh and offer the Market Match Program, where we give a dollar for every dollar spent, up to $20 per market that people can come out and utilize. And we put a whole lot of time and energy into the marketing of that, letting people know there's six apartment complexes there, 2,500 people plus in each one, thousands of people that are primarily eligible to utilize these benefits. And we struggled, we've struggled for two years, and I have to try and explain to vendors, small farmers, who I tell them, hey, come out, look at this really awesome program, this is a great opportunity, this is a great thing for the community. But they're going home with 20, 30, $40 in their pocket for four hours in the sun, hanging out, on my good faith that we're doing the right thing in the community, and that doesn't pay the bills all the time. And so I'm constantly recruiting more and more vendors. And I just recently then came across another New York Times article speaking to how we address food security and food issues, and the kind of implications of access to healthy foods or healthy diet on education, to pull it back to where we are today. But it comes down to education, more than access, more than income, when they looked at it and ran the datas in another lens. And that speaks to the need to get to youth when they're younger, so they understand what they're doing, where to spend their money, how it benefits them. And that comes to a program like this that we need, that does the education, the nutrition, the farming piece, all together. And one thing, I thank Food Literacy Center and the folks to do it, so please lend them your support.
Thank you.
Oh, I didn't make sure that I'm the last one in their comment. The last word. My name is, good evening, board members. My name is Alex Visaya, community advocate for students and families of this district. I would be remiss if I don't tell you that at least once every two, two weeks, I'm there at the school site. And those kids can't wait to get this garden open up, because I'll be the first one in line to make sure I get my fresh vegetables. Not too remiss, though, however, on the first day opening the school, I visited three elementary, one K8, K8, one middle school, and two high schools. During those visits, I am proud to share with the board how Team Kathy Allen made site improvements, especially to Leotata Floyd and Rosa Parks Blacktop. Lady, a job well done.
Thank you, Mr. Visaya.
So I know it's been a long time since we've talked about this, so let me, let me just share a few things, and maybe that'll jog some memories. So this is, this started before I even started here, so we're going on way past two-plus years. This is a partnership with the City of Sacramento, the school district, and the developers of Northwest Land Park. So one of the struggles that we had early on, again, long before I even started, was finding a third-party operator, due mostly to insurance requirements from, on our side. So it's been a long, long search. We're so glad that we have found Amber. Obviously, it's a, it's a wonderful match with everything that we're already doing. The facility that Amber mentioned will be built by, by Northwest Land Park. They are, part of the fees that they have to give to the City of Sacramento will be used to construct improvements, and one of the improvements is the farm slash garden. In addition, there will be a Sex, a City of Sacramento Community Garden there as well. So it, it is really a big collaborative, and we've just recently kind of finally identified a funding source. Northwest Land Park is doing a Community Facilities District, or CFD. We have, we have two of those as well. You hear, hear reports from those, from us a couple of times a year on that, which will provide the ongoing operating funds so that, that we can keep it sustainable and going. And when we need more dirt and more plants, we'll be able to actually buy those. So very excited. Member Hanson, I know, is, is, you know, obviously a huge advocate for this and would love to have been here tonight to share this with you. But we'll be bringing this back as we move forward. We're working, again, with the city right now, going back and looking at the old lease agreement, which is kind of, or the agreement, which is kind of out of date, and got a few things that we need to tweak on it. But we'll continue the, the press forward, and I'm going to be a food genius, so I'll have to take a class, maybe. Answer any questions if you have them.
Great. Member Cochran.
Hi, Ms. Thod, how are you? Good. I'm a very enthusiastic supporter. One thing I'd like to know, though, is that you mentioned that, you know, you work in partnership with Science Alive and some of the other gardening programs that are in the district. My one concern is that they are separate little islands in a lot of, lot of ways. You know, it's at Theodore Judah, and this is going to be at Leotata Floyd, very similar programs. Have you thought about, or has the district actually offered an opportunity to have an umbrella-type program? So we set a policy for the district that this is going to be something that we do at all our schools, and these are the partners that are going to help it happen. Have you thought about that at all?
That would be amazing. I, I don't think we're there yet. I definitely see this as a pilot for what is possible to be physically on a school site. I mean, there are very few across the state. Alice Waters Edible Schoolyard is a great example. But yeah, obviously, we all work collaboratively, collaboratively together, and, and we will be drawing on the resources that Soilborne will provide clearly to our staff, because they have their garden training program as well. We've been through the Edible Schoolyard Academy's training program, and we'll be hiring a full-time farm educator. So it's definitely a pilot to see what it looks like onsite, and if it's great and the district wants more, we're, we're in.
Yeah, I just, you know, I know that we are going to be responsible, whether that happens or not, but I just wanted, wanted to put that in your, in your brain and continue the great work. And I'm hoping that the collaborative with Science Alive and the other programs go forward, and I'll, and I'll be talking to district staff about it. I have one quick question. I don't know how it got out of my eyesight and how I missed this, but I, I never found out what is the vegetable of the year.
Bell pepper.
Nice. Member Rodriguez.
Very good question, thank you. Couple of questions. I was hoping that the presentation would show the connection for health, health professions, and maybe walking those kids through research and development with the families in that immediate area, and how, and associate that with healthy eating. You know, I, I was hoping that the presentation would bring that out, because I think that that would be an opportunity that would present itself there, since the children are, that attend to health professions are dual enrollment students, they go to college and they're enrolled in our high school. So I'd like to see if, if that's a possibility, is that, was that a thought at all?
So what is the question? Whether the high school students will be engaged, or?
The high school students are going to be engaged, but more in terms of they'll be food geniuses, but not in terms of like the research component of healthy eating and connecting it into the healthcare, that healthcare practices and healthcare fields that they're focused on in learning.
Yeah, I feel like that's a little outside of our scope. Certainly, we welcome folks from Health Professions High to join our program development committee and have input on that, but yeah, largely, we'll, we'll be coming at it from the perspective of gardening, farming, and cooking and nutrition. So I don't know if you are talking about like the dietetics side of health. We have a ton of dietetics interns, and the professor who teaches our Food Literacy Academy, she is a dietitian, a registered dietitian. So yeah, absolutely, that will be a piece of it, if that answers your question.
That would be one piece of it, but I think Ms. Taylor might want to work with Ms. Thod and start combining and creating that curriculum, because that would be a perfect environment to do case studies for children who are attending this school. They're, after all, they're there because they want to be, they want to persist in a career field related to health, and a lot of that's.
Looking forward to those opportunities to work with folks from Health Professions High, and, and we will have at least a year and a half of development once contracts are signed, because the building won't even be built for probably a year and a half. So that will be, once we have the, the go, the green light, that's when we begin really detailed program development.
Okay. And as far as I was, I've been, I guess I'm the most, actually, today I am the most senior board member up here. I was here when that project came forward initially, and there's, and I'll just state it publicly, there's a bit of concern that I have when we do these contracts with land developers, in that we have a community that exists currently at Leotata Floyd and CV Circle and that surrounding immediate area, and there's not one thing that I can say that I want to emphasize so strongly, that that community should not be displaced in any way, shape, or form, as you're going through a renewal process, a revision process, a policy process, and just trust that I will be looking at those contracts, those agreements, and I will be looking to see if there's any sense of the word that communities will be displaced that are there right now. So I'm very adamant about making sure that we give every advantage to the community that's there right now, and that we work with the community to bring them along and bring them forward into a better lifestyle, into better choices, health-wise, career-wise, and everything else related to them. Thank you.
Member Ryan.
So I have a few thoughts that I want to share. First, Amber, you know, thank you for your leadership with Food Literacy Project. You are really doing remarkable work in the Sacramento area. I was lucky enough to get to be part of the big launch and announcement of our vegetable of the year. Amber chose to hold the event at Oak Park, where we had everything from a vegetable petting zoo that the students were having a blast with, to some cooking demonstrations. And I am now proud to say my daughter will eat raw bell pepper, so thank you. For a five-year-old, that's a big deal. So I, you know, am, am very excited by the prospect of this vision of Floyd Farms and what it can be. I know we're asking you some questions that seem like they are far off in terms of curriculum, but the reality is, first, once we have that in place, I think we develop a learning laboratory, and hopefully, that learning laboratory will allow us some rich mentorship opportunities outside of Leotata Floyd, the school site, and Health Professions High, so that we can bring schools throughout the district to visit this incredible, I think, model for, for possibility in the region. I also just want to say, in response to, to Member Rodriguez's concerns about displacement, one of my great dismay is that if you don't live in or around CV Circle, quite often, very few people will ever visit the area. And as you know, for students who grow up in the area, you know, many of them never set foot outside of those confines. So the idea that we could do something that would be a model, a beacon of hope, you know, offer opportunities for beauty and learning, to me is tremendous. And it might not be in my area, but you have my percent, my, my support 100%. I'm really looking forward to making this happen.
Thank you, Member Ryan. Student Member Barry.
I think this is completely amazing, what you're doing. And a little bit about me is, I was always kind of like the fat kid, and, and like completely overweight, and then my mom kind of got me serious about learning about like vegetables, like the whole food literacy thing. And I, and just by changing my diet, I've now lost 26 pounds. And so I completely understand the whole, like, food literacy thing and how important it is, and I just want to say I completely support you, and that I know they talked about health professions, and I think that would be a really good connection, but I also know that there are certain teachers at West Campus, if you're, are so interested in there, who would love to work with you.
Great. Thank you, Amber, so much for your presentation. I've heard this in the facilities committee, and I'm even more excited today that, to hopefully be able to join forces on this. And I'm glad that Member Ryan had mentioned about CV Circle. My, my son had attended preschool back in the 90s over on CV Circle at a Head Start program, and back then, that place was a scary place to be, and, and I drive through now, and I see it blossoming, and something like this is going to help it even more. So thank you for your presentation tonight, we really appreciate it. All right. Item 11.2, Strategic Plan Needs Assessment, Mr. Al Rogers.
Evening, Board President Pritchett, Board members, Deputy Superintendent Allen. My name is Al Rogers, and I'm the Chief Strategy Officer, here to talk to you this evening about, more to give you an update on our strategic plan process, specifically to share the results of our needs assessment. I also have with me Kathy Morrison, working on the LCAP and the strategic plan, and we have Will Geralt with Pivot Learning Partners. So tonight's presentation will just briefly review, give a bit of a background on the strategic planning process and the, the project itself. I'll share with you the needs assessment recommendations, and I'll give a summary timeline of our next steps in the project. So first off, the, the previous strategic plan, valid from 2010 to 2014, has expired. Good plan, however, it's entirely appropriate for the board and the superintendent to take another look at our priorities and opportunities for this time period. And so we're using that strategic plan to figure out what are the, the best elements of the previous plan, and to sort of validate those needs and opportunities for our work as we move forward. And we're working to ensure that that work lines up very carefully with the LCAP and other district initiatives. With this work, we have Pivot Learning Partners to guide us. They've done this work throughout the country and, and done other similar projects with us in the past, so they are well-prepared to help us do a good job with this. This process should yield for us a strategic plan that, as I mentioned, aligns all of our initiatives, and it should inform our major decisions for the next five years. plan, however, it's entirely appropriate for the board and the superintendent to take another look at our priorities and opportunities for this time period. And so we're using that strategic plan to figure out what are the best elements of the previous plan and to sort of validate those needs and opportunities for our work as we move forward. And we're working to ensure that that work lines up very carefully with the LCAP and other district initiatives. With this work, we have Pivot Learning Partners to guide us. They've done this work throughout the country and done other similar projects with us in the past. So they are well-prepared to help us do a good job with this. This process should yield for us a strategic plan that, as I mentioned, aligns all of our initiatives. And it should inform our major decisions for the next five years. A quick review of our timeline. We are through the first portion there. We're just up at the top from September to October. It says that we're in discover and interpret and yielding a needs assessment. And we're moving straight into the ID8 and prototype, which means that very shortly, within about three weeks, actually, we will have for you a first draft of the actual strategic plan. It'll be more of an outline. It won't be fleshed out yet, but it'll have a lot of the major components after we've had an initial round of community engagement. So regarding our process to figure out our needs, what we did was, we studied lots of data. We looked at achievement data, climate data, budget, operations, other kinds of information. We facilitated focus groups, and we reviewed other districts' strategic plans and similar kinds of documents. We learned a lot. We found that over the past three to five years, there are some bright spots. For example, the graduation rate has increased, and we're operating somewhere around 85%, which is higher than the state and higher than most districts in the area. There were also some areas that were, well, there are areas of concern. Primarily, we found that academic achievement indicators are, for all intents and purposes, flat. This includes college readiness, AP exams, and A through G completion for our graduates. We also found that unfortunately, the achievement gap between student groups has not narrowed or decreased. We also found that while suspensions are down for many students, it's not so for students of color. In fact, the percentage they represent of our suspensions has actually increased. So in addition to reviewing data, we also formed a series of focus groups where we had interviews and dialogue. There, in fact, there were 10 focus groups. And they involved many different stakeholders from throughout the community. So we learned that there are achievements that we can, we can point to. Social-emotional learning implementation has gone underway, and it's actually yielding promising results. We've seen increased family and community engagement, and we are seeing improvement in preparing students for post-secondary success. Ongoing challenges that bubbled up in conversation through the focus groups were, one of the challenges identified were staffing and hiring procedures, ongoing challenges with professional learning, issues of course access. So specifically, there's an interest in a richer or wider variety of opportunity for students. And we'd like to see, or it's out there, there's an interest in more effective culturally competent communication with students and with their families. In doing this work, we also had the opportunity to review eight other school districts. Some were nearby districts such as Elk Grove or San Juan. And we also looked for school districts with similar demographics, including San Jose, Fresno, San Francisco, Long Beach. And we also identified school districts throughout the country that were particularly innovative in their approach in this work, namely Denver and St. Paul. What we found was that our themes of reform or improvement are actually consistent with the findings and the approaches of other urban school districts. Our process for engaging the community through focus groups, surveys, other kinds of data analysis is also similar. And specific documents like our LCAP is very closely aligned to the other priorities that districts have identified. So this process yields a series of recommendations. It kind of reflects a qualitative research process that is really just about understanding the priorities and possibilities. Now, we're about to be able to go deeper into our work and try to ascertain whether these initial findings or these, almost like suspicions, we wonder, we think this is probably a good idea. We want to learn more. So we've learned at this point that there is a general consensus that we need to look at wraparound social supports. There's a strong interest in that. We understand that the community is committed to learning more about different, more robust, and engaging strategies for student and family engagement. We also have learned that we've got to find some different kinds of ways to support students of color. And there are some opportunities to explore different methods for professional learning. And there is a profound need for staff with bilingual capabilities. We've also learned that our portfolio of coursework probably needs to be expanded. We've learned that students are hungry for additional opportunities to explore college and career. And there is a definite interest in enhancing or otherwise improving our hiring process for staff. There's consideration for rethinking special education. And if there are opportunities for improving that, we'd like to find out what that looks like. And there's interest in performance management, a way to track that and support that for all staff. And there is a keen interest in improving district systems for tracking our performance. So data systems, keeping accurate records as well as tracking our performance as we continue our work. So after completing the needs assessment, the next steps are to engage community, dig a little bit deeper into the data, put together a draft strategic plan, and that should be shared or available for the board's review on November 5th, which is coming up very shortly. We'll also begin the community planning process, which is detailed, I think, a little bit more in your, in your needs assessment document. But it explains that we're going to be looking for feedback on this plan, using public education volunteers, engagement at school sites, through school site councils, PTAs, and other opportunities, and holding large community meetings at school sites throughout each of the board member areas. Recruitment of our public education volunteers begins very shortly, as you see pretty much right away. And we're going to formally train them in this engagement work. And they'll, they'll serve as sort of agents spreading the word about the work, as well as bringing information back and enhancing the actual strategic plan, validating those ideas, and helping inform further inquiry. We're also planning to manage some survey work, and we're hoping to get some useful information in the window of November 16 to, through to December. Principals will be also utilized in this work, engaged in this work. We want them to engage their respective staffs and, and communities, again, using PTA and school site council meetings, faculty meetings. And we're hoping that they will facilitate ongoing conversation. And we hope that, we're hoping to have discussions and encourage ongoing review of our performance data. So as we're doing this strategic plan, remember, we're also developing our LCAP. And finally, this other use of community meetings in general are not so much school-specific, but large meetings, held at school sites, in fact, instead of at the Serna Center, as a means to making it more accessible to different community groups. We're also considering and looking to implement a series of fireside chats. We're thinking that perhaps area assistant superintendents and others can, and board members, of course, can maybe hold some informal conversation with different community groups and, and share what we think we've learned and get the community's perspective on that as we proceed. Details on that are indeed forthcoming. I'm going to skip through this, the details of this. You've seen this before, but it just, it's there to remind the group that while we're managing the strategic plan, we are also developing the LCAP. Strategic plan, of course, has a five-year cycle, and the LCAP is an annual cycle. So they should be closely aligned. They should actually kind of feed each other. But another look at the timeline of events coming up, pretty much what I described there. I should say, though, that we're looking forward to that second draft. So we'll go through this process a couple of times. And by spring, you'll have another, another draft presented to you. We'll do some final edits, some more changes. And by June, you will have a final strategic plan that should reflect lots and lots of ongoing detailed analysis of performance data. I think some very creative development and engagement throughout all of our communities. Are there questions?
A public comment?
We have two comments on this item from Darlene Anderson and Alex Visaya.
Hi. You know, sustainability is what life is about. If you're going to implement something, how are you going to make it happen? And single plans for student achievement is supposed to make that happen. And you're supposed to be really able to measure those, whatever you want to do. So like, we have the farm to fork, whatever, and how is that going to work in the plan? And who was going to be the partner? And who was going to ensure that all the teachers knew what was going to go on? That was all a part of the planning process for the site, site-specific. They say we do local control. They say it's about local planning. But unfortunately, African-American people usually don't show up. And when they do show up, they're usually ignored, just like I am many times at this board, when I share my concerns about the achievement of African-American students. How is that going to change anything when we have a strategic plan that talks about student achievement when many, many African-American kids are far below basic? And their parents can't see what's going to change it for them. I've had other parents come to me and say, can you help me with my child? I say, yeah, I think I can. But you're going to have to be able to listen and follow what the law says. Because everyone has to follow the law, irregardless of what you know about it. You first must read and educate yourself in order to defend one's position as to where you will be in 12 years out of this public school system. Every child has a right to learn. Every child has a right to participate. Every child should know what engaged learning looks like. But when you have, you're helping a parent whose child is a senior and only got five credits last year, what does that look like? That looks like an IEP meeting. That looks like a determination if that student is special ed or not. But why would it take till the ninth grade to determine if that student needed additional services? Who was ever going to do it? He was just allowed to fail. And my concern is that there are more students that look like him than not. And when you're planning in your single plan for student achievement, you should be trying to figure out how you stop that, how you, you know, how you provide that safety net for those children who are not making it, not just to graciously give them an F and let them fail continually until they are able to graduate somehow with a computer-based program, collecting credits, and still go to jail because they're not employable after 12 years. They don't have the social skills. I think we just need to do a better job. But it's going to be site-based decisions. I think it requires more parents and more community members to be involved in the planning process to ensure that progress is making, is happening. And I just think that until we allow our community to be a part of the schools, and even where the schools are failing, that we won't change things. And so it's just not about the data on the outside, but it's about the data on the inside, ensuring that all kids are making progress. And I hope we really look at this process and engage more parents. I didn't know you guys had some meetings because somehow I missed those meetings, but I would like to be informed, and I'd like for them to be posted. And I'd like more community members to come out and share their concerns about what's happening locally in their community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Visaya? Last speaker. Uh-oh.
Where are they when we meet them?
I knew I'd, I'm going to get a kick out of this one. Distinguished Board of Trustees, Cabinet and Staff, Board First Vice President Pritchett, Deputy Superintendent Ms. Lisa Allen, good evening. My name is Alex Visaya, community advocate for the students and families of this district. Of course, here I do. This bat is to show you that I'm always batting for our students in this district. And that, Mr. Castillo, is where all my energy comes from, just like the energy bunny, and going, and going, and going. So this evening, I want to share my thoughts regarding the item at hand. For decades, we have had enough common sense ideas, lots and lots of research, and statistical data, how to fix the secondary educational system. From a nation at risk to the most listened, no child left behind, our most vulnerable kids are yet to reach excellent education that they richly deserve. After all, it's the law that they go to school from age six to 18 years old. Member Cochran, yes, you're right, madam, that during the school days, the common denominator in the classroom is the student and teacher. My pleasure, I'll recommend that we also include a strong leader administrator in all sites, most especially all 4 through 3 elementary schools. What is missing for these students is free to act, to equity and opportunity in reaching their goal, most especially the ELL, socioeconomic disadvantage, special education, special kids, and foster youth. And finally, Dr. Rogers, would you please come to the podium?
I noticed you walked over there when you saw the bat.
No, I'm not about this guy. Please state your cabinet position for the TV audience and at home.
Chief Strategy Officer?
Except for his family, I know Dr. Rogers more than anyone in this room. He knows my passion is kids for all 42,000 plus in this district. On his behalf, I thank this board for appointing him this position. I'm absolutely positive he will deliver passionate results for going forward. And, and the rest, and the first ever to be specifically designated chief strategy officer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Visaya. All right, we have, do we have any other public comment? Okay. Board comment. Student Member Barry?
I will happen to be on one of the focus groups that you mentioned, and then I also facilitated one of them. And it really made me happy to see the results I saw during it on the paper. But when I was looking through the PowerPoint and, because that focus group focused on what we saw from the strategic plan in the past. But all the, the meetings and the gatherings that are mentioned to get feedback for the new strategic plan, it never mentioned students. So I'm wondering if you're going to get students
So the answer to your question is yes, absolutely. So we're trying to figure out exactly what that looks like, and I think that the principals are going to be very helpful. But also, the PTA meetings and school site councils will also help us engage parents and students. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Ryan?
So first, Dr. Rogers, I want to thank you for the energy and vision that you've brought forth into putting the strategic plan together. Even though it's in the early stages, there has been a lot of thought, and I think some really good ideas generated. A few things that I want to focus on, you know, I appreciate the deep dive into data because I feel like it's virtually impossible for us to put forth a strong plan if we're not having an honest conversation around data, and in particular, where we're failing our students. As I look at some of these trends over the past three to five years, there are a few things that are very stark to me and merit exploration, and I hope will be part of a larger conversation. You know, obviously, as we talk about the graduation rate increasing, while I appreciate that, at that same time, if the achievement gap has not decreased, and we are seeing that our A through G completion, college readiness completion is flat, that is extremely troubling. If we see that suspensions are down for all populations, but for students of color, the percentage has actually increased, it really makes me wonder how we could leave a couple hundred thousand dollars on the table towards restorative justice work in last year's budget. I hope that as we move forward with the strategic planning process, we really look at equity at every level of the plan, equitable opportunity for all students, and have that focus beyond closing the achievement gap. Because frankly, I think we know that some students in some schools do far better than others, and we need to make sure that we standardize an opportunity for all students irrespective of the color of their skin. I also strongly feel that when we know that trends locally, such as Los Rios enrollment being flat, in particular from Sacramento City Unified School District students, us actually losing our share, as I've talked about in past board meetings, of attendance at Sac State, and having Elk Grove become the largest feeder district, we have to do something to buck that troubling trend. And while I know that people will argue that not all students are college material, I strongly feel that all students should be able to make that choice. And so I hope that part of the strategic planning process will be a reopening of the conversation around whether A through G should become the default curriculum for all students in Sacramento City Unified School District. Because I will tell you, when you talk to parents, they're not telling you that their children are not college material. We are often making that determination for other students, and I think that that is unconscionable. Finally, you know, as you're going out into the community and doing this work, I know, being a mother of a kindergartner in the school district, there are myriad competing priorities that parents are dealing with. We have to do a better job of articulating why a strategic plan matters. And then beyond that, showing parents that the time and energy they put into providing us feedback actually translates into priorities and results. And so I think we need to give a great deal of thought to how we message that in a real way that has resonance with the families across the district, and then facilitate conversations that are honest, both about the district's strengths and where we must and can do better.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Ryan. Member Rodriguez?
Thank you, ladies. Thank you, Vice President Pritchett. Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Thank you for including a couple of the items I had asked for the last time. One of the things I did not see is the, you have a discussion about, we're doing this dual-track system right now, you know, we're going to be going out to the community for strategic plan and out to the community for the LCAP, and how are we going to prevent the confusion from taking place?
Well, you know, I think that in general, the confusion piece, we think that clarifying for people the nature of the conversation will help dispel an awful lot of that confusion. That's why we have sort of large group meetings, as well as close-in fireside chats. We're going to try everything we can to address that as it shows up. But I think in some ways, the conversation and the whole point of the alignment piece is that the discussion on equity and the achievement gap, for example, is not specific to one and excludes the other. In fact, it will work for each of our processes and should be aligning all of our initiatives. So I think that part will be clear and easily accessed for students and families.
I know that I have other questions for you, but I also know that your secretary reached out to me, and we're going to be scheduling an appointment. So I'll reserve the rest of my questions for that time. But I just kind of wanted to add in and support the comments of my colleague, Member Ryan. You know, I've sat here since 2008, and, you know, at a certain point, you get tired of talking about equity and access, because you almost feel like it's unattainable when you look at a big district. But then hope comes along, and it's in the form of local control funding, and sometimes you're forced into looking at equity and the access for children and putting them up onto a level playing field with others. And so, you know, there's many areas in the budget that I could point out to and say, we're not placing a priority on these. So as we're going through this process, don't forget that a focus would be also to look at that budget document, find out where we're not expending our money fully, because as I've always said since I've sat in the seat, 2008 to today, children don't get a second chance to learn. The dollar that they have today should be spent on them today. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Rodriguez.
Thank you. Alf, for such a job well done, and taking on such a big job of this. I do have a quick question about the focus groups that were initially done. How were the individuals chosen, and what did it consist of?
I don't have my notes here, but I'm going to kind of refer a little bit here to Ms. Morrison. But remember, the focus groups are, their purpose is to get a sampling of what's out there, right? So this is not an exhaustive, say, a survey, but it's just to randomly select stakeholder groups to get a representative idea as to what might be out there, right? So the deeper dive happens now. So choosing people, for example, choosing students, I think that we just communicated with the school communities and invited students to be able to participate. Kathy, I'm going to go ahead and defer to you for the remaining focus groups.
So as Dr. Rogers said, the focus groups were just a very, very small part of the research. The 10 that we held consisted of one group of principals who were volunteers in the process. We had one group of certificated staff. We had two groups of classified staff here at Serna Center, and four groups of parents. So to answer the question of the parents, we reached out to the Sacramento Council PTA for one group, and then we had a very short timeframe. So we held one at Hollywood Park that was promoted through their Parent Resource Center, one at Caesar Chavez, promoted the same way, one at John Still, and, sorry, those are the four. And for the student groups, the first group was with the Student Advisory Council Executive Board, and the students that participated there were trained to facilitate the focus group with the broader Student Advisory Council that met here at Serna Center. So again, with the timeframe, we were not able to achieve a perfect distribution of our whole district, but really, we were just seeking to kind of dip into the opinion of our general community.
That was actually the answer I was looking for. I was trying to see if you've got all the pies of, you know, putting together. All right. And then, Member Barry had kind of touched on my question about parents being recruited through, but it seems like you're already working on that. But I do want to just ask that you utilize your board. Many of us are very engaged in our communities, and we can really help you along this process. So please just reach out to us.
Well, this isn't part of the script, but I will, through Dr. Rogers, reach out to each of you, because public education volunteer is something that I think many of you would really enjoy and be interested in. So when that communication comes out, I hope you take a look at that as well.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, we don't have any other questions on the board. And so it looks like this was just an informational item, so thank you so much for your presentation. I appreciate that. Item 12.0, Business and Financial Information Reports. 12.1, Business and Financial Information Purchase Order Board Report for Period of August 15, 2015 through September 14, 2015. We received this information. Item 13.0, Future Board Meetings. The locations will be November, Dayton locations will be November 5. 4:30 closed session, 6:30 open session at the Serna Center on November 19. 4:30 closed session, 6:30 open session here at the Serna Center. Can I get a motion to close our meeting tonight?
I have a motion to close.
Thank you. Can I get a second? Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Great. We are adjourned.